This conference will now be recorded.
Coming up the stairs right now, so give him one second. When he turns that corner.
It's gonna take his time.
I call it. The time being 4:45 PM, I'd like to call the meeting of November 3rd, 2022 to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is to review and approve the minutes from 10:20 and 10:27.
I didn't see anything. They jumped out. So I'll make motion to accept the new October 20th, 2022 address.
Second. Motion in second, pass the Selectman Constantino.
Just jumped down a little bit. Under page eight and nine. Selectman's Constantino's report. The first paragraph. First paragraph under Mike Krajewski, who made Cunningham Wood sold them, we sold them at the Center Executive Committee. So it's, this sounds like he sold them and then the proceeds went to the gift deposit. We sold them and then the proceeds went to you. Which is what I said.
Yeah, I have an amendment on page eight of nine. It's the bit from Gasmore Properties, it's provided, it's done the same time.
Can you point that out where?
Okay, so let's see. What paragraph can hold?
What page?
Eight of nine.
Eight.
Okay, so what did you say?
It's in this year, at the same time.
At the same time where?
Strike out this year and put in, and the same time.
Oh, is it, how many lines down is?
The bold, yeah, the bold.
Yeah, second line in bold.
Oh, at the same time.
Same time, yeah.
Done this year.
Exactly.
I'm excited, I reread what I questioned and I'm okay with that.
You can just change it, just like Pat. I don't think we need an amendment.
Just to accept it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's amended, you bet.
Okay.
As amended and as clarified.
Okay.
Second.
Second, yes. Motion in second, any further discussion? Is in favor of accepting the minutes from October 20, 2022, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting of October 27th, 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion.
I'll call a question.
Question has been called, those in favor of accepting the minutes from October 27th, 2022, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next up on our agenda is our town moderator, Mrs. Hanks, to discuss November 8th elections. That would be you.
So exciting.
Helen, it's good to have you back.
Thank you.
Exciting updates.
Well, I want you to know that once again, we will be expressing our constitutional rights to vote on November 8th and look forward to seeing most of you there. So I've come. And first I'd like to thank Jeannie and Gail for their help as they've been navigating the school and setup on behalf of the Selectmen. It's been seamless and wonderful, so thank you. The second order of business is the setup, I would recommend it to be virtually the same. The difference being adding a neck, extra ballot clerk table and splitting, we'll be splitting the, voting into three alphabetical categories pursuant to the election procedure manual, just to make sure, given the numbers, that people are not waiting in line more than 15 minutes. But otherwise, the DPW crew did a great job last time and I will show up at four o'clock and see if anything needs any adjustments and I appreciate anybody who could join me from the Selectmen. But we do need to, and I need to ask you to add additional alternates for inspectors of the election. Ms. Bonneville is not available, even though her party asked her to, she just has an alternative opportunity that I can appreciate why she's not going to make it, so she sends her apologies. And as that you previously had included Linda Burns and Deborah Shepherd, they'll both still be available. You previously included Jackie Rushlow, Gaybean and Catherine Dawson. What I would ask is a vote of the Selectmen to consider including Ken Norton and Lauren Nother.
So.
Second.
Motion in second. Mr. Jessman?
Oh, no, I was doubling I.
Are we good with going straight to, straight to vote on that? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there we go.
Okay, so we just wanted to make sure we added those additional individuals because we'll have three tables for ballot clerk working all day long. With that, I don't think I have anything else, I just need to make sure we add it. Mr. Carver?
So I was reading the Laconia Daily Sun today and it had a list of dates and times of the polling hours. So are we eight to seven as was published or are we seven to eight, seven to seven?
We're seven to seven as is posted outside on the piece, I don't know where they got that information from.
Probably from last year.
Yep.
I just want to make sure.
No budgeted, so if I'm publicly listening, it's 7 AM to 7 PM.
Any other, Mr. Jackson?
Now I have a question. Monday, setup, the usual.
So DPW is going to do what they did the last time?
Yeah.
I'm gonna roll in at four and anyone who can join to
Okay.
either help them finish up or just adjust.
Yep. I'll be there.
Yep.
Mrs. Mitchell will be there, no doubt in my mind.
I told them they didn't need to come.
Yeah, but she's gonna wanna come, I think.
I'm gonna have to ask her. I think we have some good town resources to help get that squared away.
On Tuesday, do you want us there about happening?
It's always helpful to get there around 6:30 if you can. I'll be there. No later than 6:30, probably 6:15 as I did the last time.
Do we have adequate ballot clerks, people who are going to be able to do the count with you in case there's a lot of bad action? Seems like it took a while for half a dozen people to do the count.
So the reason that counting took longer last time is because of the change in law, you have to count overvotes and undervotes, which is a completely new practice. This will be different because we're not in a primary and we're not dealing with two separate ballots and two separate parties.
Okay.
One ballot, I expect it to be more seamless. I think the problem is, is that we asked the poll workers to take down the polls, well, they should be focused on poll working.
True.
And the noise that gets created is not conducive to going through the books and counting the number of Republicans, Democrats and Independents.
So we, as we talked about, we had checked with the school to see if they would allow DPW to get the following morning and they said no. So I did talk with Kevin, explained to him your concern, I guess this is the first time that DPW has broken down, according to Kevin, it's broken down.
It wasn't asked to try to create efficiency, yeah.
But, what? But he intends to be there that evening with his crew to break down and I expressed to him that maybe you can create an area where poll workers are and then they can take everything else down except what they're working, using the tables and then if they're long, they can leave and they can take that table down.
Yeah, that would be great.
So, and I expressed to him that there were concerns about the noises we're trying to count, so if he gets it, he'd be there to take care of it.
Excellent, thank you, Jeannie.
Great.
Great.
See you next Monday and Tuesday.
Absolutely, look forward to it.
Did you get that I will be there all day Tuesday?
I did, I've read every email and I appreciate everyone's communication, even though I didn't respond back, but I did see it and I appreciate it.
I have to leave like now, I have to take the call.
You know, we will, we will give you that opportunity.
I don't, so you have to deal with this full time.
I've experienced that before, happy to do it. No, we, I think as a community come together incredibly well, tilt for people this way and I look forward to everybody helping and catching in.
Look forward to it.
Thank you. You're welcome, have a good night.
There.
See you there, no.
Like to welcome Mr. Steve O'Leary up to talk about some signs on town property. Welcome, Mr. O'Leary.
Good afternoon, I was gonna say good evening because it would have been that time, the first, first time we're supposed to meet with you.
Tim, can you hear me okay?
Here, you're fine.
Okay.
I'm here to discuss the parking out front of the Tiltman Inn, the Onion Restaurant. As a taxpayer. Our taxpayers' money is maintaining those parking spots out front. But as taxpayers cannot use those spots because it's privately marked as a toe zone unless you're going into the inn. So I feel as a taxpayer, either they paid for that property, you deed it out to the property to them, but you have to go to this legislative body to do that before you could even do that. And it should have been done in the first place when they gave up that, those parking spots. The Selectmen should have gone to the legislative body and got the okay because it's still using taxpayers' money to maintain those, those areas. Okay, let me start at the beginning, just so you know. I didn't come to you guys, the Selectmen came to me this year. Because this year I decided I was gonna put it on social media and ask, why is our taxpayers' money being used on a private parking area? And I got three Selectmen that notified me about that, called me at home, one actually showed up at my house, that was Scott, and asked me about it. So I, you know, I expressed my opinion because this is not the first time I had mentioned it. I can go back to Joe of June 29th, 2020, I had a conversation with Joe about it and he said he'll get back, but I never heard back.
My apologies for that.
No, no, that's all right, so that's one reason why I put it on. I came here to make sure I get some type of reaction from, from this board. Okay, because like I said, on July 12th, I put it on Face, I should say, Tilton Northfield Talk and it, and asked, you know, what's going on with this? And all these people are asking me, we shouldn't be doing this, we shouldn't be in the, then I get, Scott showed up at my house, John gave me a call and Pat gave me a call and asked me about it. And Scott told me he will call me, call me back. On the 14th, Scott called me back and says, no, the town owns the property. And I says, okay, let's take down those signs because it's not a private parking. It's owned by the town. And he says, oh, and I said, because right now we're gonna, we're gonna get towed. Scott told me that I could park there because I won't be towed, he said the owner told him he won't tow anybody. But what is, do we, do we have an agreement with them? That they could use that property for free? Or do, or did they just says, okay, we'll let you have it and we'll still maintain it as town property? And that can't, can't be right. As a, as a taxpayer, you're talking about parking in town here. There's limited parking and now you got four places that became private parking and it's maintained by the town and taxpayers, that's misuse of taxpayers' money by doing that. And if they do have a thing, do they have a lease? Do they rent the property? Because that's the only way they could put those signs out there. Because they don't own the property, if they rent the property or lease the property, yes, they can. But if, if there's not, no lease or rental agreement, they cannot tow people. And I know there's a lot of people in town that agree with me, so I haven't even done anything beyond that because I wanted to talk to you, see if we could resolve the issue. And another thing is, okay, if you allow them to keep the signs there, there's a sign ordinance, a setback ordinance on signage. That isn't, those signs are in a public walkway. They're on the sidewalks. And you don't allow that happening, the rest of the town, you won't let them put signs out, the businesses on the middle of the sidewalks because the people want to go by. That's the same thing. Anybody have any question for me or?
You laid it out pretty straightforward, I don't do social media for the most part.
Right, right, I understand that, I, 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 my conversation with you was instant messaging, I've done that with you, yes. But I, I decided this year I wasn't going to just walk up to the Selectmen and say, no, you guys approached me this time. Because last year it was another Selectmen I talked to. And I got one that's no longer the Selectmen, before I talked to Joe, who had, you know, stepped down about this issue. Because the inn has its own parking now around the corner. They own that building down there and they restricted it strictly for their parking. So the townspeople should be able to get their parking spots back. If not, enforce the law. You've got two hour parking all the way from Cumberland Farms to Park Street, two hour parking, but those four spots, there's no limit to how long they park there, they can park overnight. But it shouldn't be because it's in the town thing, it should be covered by the two hour parking and the signage of no parking after, overnight parking after midnight to 5 AM because for snow removal. If you got cars parked out there, they have to go around them because we're maintaining them, you're allowing the town to maintain them. Or you guys told the town to still maintain them, I could say. I can't say Scott did because this is the first time you heard about it, I could say. Because he wasn't a Selectman in these last few years that I have mentioned.
I questioned this in 2012, 2013. Because it didn't make sense to me, I, there is, and I have it in front of me, a copy of Minutes of Tilton Select Board in 1906.
Yeah, yeah, my, that's what I, that's what I, I think I, I think I told Scott, it was, it was in April of '06 or March of '06.
Yeah. I've got it right here. And it's, it's a very detailed account of what the, what the deal has been with the inn. Have you read those minutes?
No, I have not.
I could sit there and read it to you, but I feel like
I can give them my copy, Joe.
Yeah, okay.
Well, don't you want teachers? I can send you another copy.
Do you want me to read them now or do you want me to read it?
No.
We'll be talking about this again.
Right, yeah, right.
We'll be reaching out to you when we do.
Right, okay, I understand because you, none of you guys were involved in the, the whole thing. But like I'm saying, I'm looking at it now as, as a taxpayer, you can come downtown and it was limited to spot, parking as it is. The inn has four places that they reserve for themselves as private parking. But now they own another building and they got parking there and they eliminated anybody from parking in that place except their employees or their guests. And my feeling is the town should take back their parking spot. No one, none of the other businesses in this town has private parking in front of their business.
I do have a question about that, maybe John can answer that. When they started planning for Michon's office, was the condition of approval for so many parking spaces with, that goes to that specific building?
I think that was before my time that
With, with the inn taking over Michon's building?
Oh, oh. He did state that he had adequate parking, I don't recall the number of that.
But it wasn't a condition of approval?
I don't believe so.
I think that's a question that we need to find out. If there's sometimes conditions of approval to buildings and businesses, there's so many spaces there that have to be to that specific business and not to two businesses. Not split between the two of them. But they can't be split between two, it's allocated to one business as another, sometimes that happens. I just wanted to confirm or clarify that, because sometimes it's not. Businesses, other businesses in town own more than one business and if they have adequate parking in one area, it doesn't mean that they have can use parking in another area.
Some businesses have no.
Can be downtown, right. I just wanted to be clarified, something we need to look into.
Yeah, we brought up a couple of good points, I think, Steve. Especially about the signs.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read this, but the signage, like I said, it's in a public walkway. We didn't give them the sidewalks.
Yep, I hear you, we wouldn't let anybody else do that.
Right, right. And I got pictures of the sign and it, you know, like I said, it's reserved. Yeah, it's reserved parking for them.
Part of the Minutes state that they, they would maintain the spaces. And I think they, they don't repay them, I don't believe.
Well, in there it specifies plowing, maintenance, signage, it says everything.
And he does some of that, and I can't explain exactly what he does.
Yeah, but it, I'm talking about painting, we're sending town people out there. We, our, our taxpayers' money is painting, painting those lines every year since they taken over, because I asked this question before, this is why I came to you.
I can find out the answer to that right now, Mr. Duba.
He's offered to pay that too and we refused to.
Well, what I want to know is, is you paint those stripes currently?
Yeah. And the inn is
And I do remember he offered to pay.
Correct.
But how can the town Selectmen give a piece of property that is maintained by the town? So I haven't seen any money exchanged in the, you know, you don't.
The Minutes say that they had those parking spaces since in 1930, they had substantiation, that's what the Minutes said.
How, how many years, how many years was the inn closed before?
One.
What?
One.
No, they were closed more than one because I would, I ran the store across the street from 92 to 95, I managed the store and they weren't not in there until after that point.
Right after Thompson owned.
Because
Again, it says one here.
That's what Joanne Oliver
Yeah.
But he's talking a different period of time.
And the reason why I know I slagged down a Tilton officer one day, one afternoon and asked me, was there supposed to be someone going into the basement of the Tiltman Inn? Because I could see it from our windows. They were stealing the pipes from there. So that was closed.
The agreement with, with the Board of Selectmen at the time was in '06, that was the agreement, 90, 90, so it could have been vacated in the early 90s.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was vacated in 90, so.
But this was when Joanne Oliver had the inn in '06, that's when the
Right, I know, this is when this went into effect, but do you actually have something that says they own those parking spots at that time, back in the earlier years?
Do a little research, Steve.
Yeah, you would have to because, you know, all the pictures that I see, there's no signage, it says, you know, private parking, private parking. Yeah, you would have to because, you know, all the pictures that I see, there's no signage. It says, you know, private parking, private parking. That all the, all the old pictures that I seen. In actuality, I'm, I'm going to say, I know of a picture right now that's not even 10 years old. And those signage were out there at that time.
I mean, according to these minutes of 2016, it states that photographic evidence from the 1930s, the ink parking was dedicated to the Tilton Inn. And then it further goes on that according to a publication, it doesn't say what publication, from the local government center on grandfather rights. It states that just because a business has closed for a year does not mean they have abandoned the use of the building. The building wasn't in and remained it in while it was closed and is still an inn. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, because, you know.
See what we, what we do, want to talk to the next.
It doesn't say they can give, give them permission to put signs out there.
I want to say, yeah.
Yeah, I do recall when I think it was Charlie's and Bruce, when they bought the building from Thompson. That they had come to the planning or CBA because they didn't want to invest in building where nobody could park. And I think there might have been some type of agreement made then that they would allow that. But we'd have to do a lot more research because we're not for us to collect taxes. And that we, we need to do it. So I'm not part of that, but I remember something about that. Because, you know, if we don't have any parking for them, the business fails. Building that we can't collect all taxes. Just as if.
But if it's still being maintained by the town. That's a misuse of town's funds. If they're doing it and not getting paid for it, it's a misuse of town's fund.
And one of the, the other, if it's exclusive, I, I believe that key thing is. One of the things is we have houses on the road that people park in the street.
Now they can't, they can't, they can't park out there more than two hours in front of their apartment buildings anymore. It's all been, all signs have been put up within the last, I'm going to say, six months. They weren't out there before and now they are. What?
I don't remember when they first.
They weren't, they weren't, they weren't, they weren't out there. What I'm going to say, the last six months, they've been put out there.
Two hour parking?
Two hour parking from Cumberland Farms to right over to right over to the end.
That was when the parking, when we first established the parking.
Yeah, but it's more than six months.
No, it's been more than six months. When we first established the parking ordinance back.
How long, how long has the signs been up?
Two hours, two years.
Yeah.
Those signs went up there for two to three years. I know the, the rest of it, okay.
I don't know the exact date. I know they've been up for a while.
I don't, I don't think they have been. Honestly, I don't think they have been.
We redid some, Steve, and some were missing, so we put in a few that were needed to be added when the parking ordinance, pardon, that two hour parking is an existing project. The parking ordinance.
So are we going to haul this snow away this year?
We hauled it away last year.
I think we need to talk about all the points that you've brought up as a board. And we don't have enough time allotted with what you.
Right, right. I, I understand. I will let you guys, I'll give you about a month and a half.
No, you've brought up some really valid points and I think they justify putting it on our agenda and, and getting to the bottom of it.
Right.
And we just, you know, you've brought up some very good points. We need to talk about it.
Yep, and then, and looking, obviously looking at the prior decisions that are.
Correct.
Right, yeah, right. I want to, I want to read this.
Weighing, weighing exactly where we are and, and also being able to, to talk with the current owner as well.
Because like I said, it's misuse of taxpayers' money if we're, if we're, we're maintaining it ourselves. And the taxpayer cannot use those spots, but you told me I could. But if I, if I parked there and I get towed, who do I go after? Do I go after the town or do I go after? But it's, but that's, that's the big issue. Because you're telling people that, oh, they can park there, but they can't. They can be towed. But who's, who's a liability is it?
Can't answer that right now.
Yeah, I know.
You brought a good point. We can't answer that right now. But we'll get the answer.
The only one last thing I have. And he might be able to answer it for me. You're talking about parking spots. We have the electronic sign down there by Park Street. Why is it in a parking spot instead of that cross off area? You got two parking spots locked off.
The parking spots are in the cross off areas, probably the state's, I mean, I guess.
It's a, it's a turnaround. You can't do, you cannot cross over that turnaround. The state will not allow us to put anything in there because of the truck's turnaround.
But why are you taking up two parking spots?
You could back it up and then you're, when you back it up into behind.
They have to plow that area, don't they?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'm not really.
They go across that area with the vehicle. So, you know, what's, you know, what's the difference?
This is our public work.
Right, I understand.
If anybody can answer this question.
That's why I asked.
Yes, I, I chose to sacrifice a parking space because that is a high visibility area.
Right, I understand that, but there's two, two parking spots right there that, that you got one, you've got an empty one right close to the, the cross line. That's empty. Then you get the.
It's been my experience, sir, that those parking spaces are rarely used unless there's an, there's a event. Being held at the front park. So if I have a choice of where to put that sign in that intersection, it's going to be there rather than in front of the air salon. Or across the parking, across the area where the, the tax shop is. Or that, that high, the high traffic area of the gas station. So that is the least impacted area that I can place that sign.
I understand it, but why are you taking up two instead of just one? Okay. That's, that's something I caught the other day. I just want, wondering. You're talking about parking in downtown. It's very restricted.
Again, and especially this time of year, those are very rarely.
Right, I understand. I understand that.
We may need a parking study done soon. I think we found our man.
All right. Thank you for listening to me in rampant rage, but you know, it's been a system. It's been, like I said, been years that I keep on mentioning it and it gets blown away. This year I decided to go a different way. I got approached, so I decided that I was going to come talk to you folks about it.
Now that we've done some digging, we'll do a little bit more.
All right, thank you. And I'll read these. Will you let me know when you're going to be on the agenda again?
We'll try and do it for four, six weeks.
I know, I know you're busy at this time of year anyway with your budgets and stuff like that, but I've just, you know, I'm concerned about. All right, thank you.
Next up is DPW director Kevin Duba. So the director of the ball's got the paving update and 2023 budget for us, so. And parking updates. Aren't you happy to show up early, Mr. Duba?
Yes. Yes, it turns out we are good.
Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you. So I, I guess I should address first what this gentleman brought up about the two parking spaces that are being taken up by the sign. Do I have permission to, to move that variable message board to one parking space?
Yeah, I'm, whatever you see, whatever you deem appropriate. Okay, so.
In census.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so just wanted have a conversation with you about the paving project. Everything is going very well. They did the reclaim fine grade and compact in three days. All of the excess material generated from the reclaim process was brought to DPW. We actually utilized it on the ramp for the transfer station. We brought up the ramp about six inches, which has given us a great base for future paving in that area. So we won't have to purchase any material when that comes about. That was nice to see. And we have a stockpile. I want to say there's probably 60 or 70 yards of material stored out back for future use as well. It's pretty exciting to see that because it's not, not too often we do a project like this and we have some extra leftover of that type of volume that can help us out for, for years, not, not little projects here and there, but for, for years. I did want to mention that reducing the size of the job due to the water department's need for working up there before we paved those roads led to some savings for this budget year and next, next year's budget as well. Actually, I shouldn't back up a little bit. I have asked the water department to give me an ETA on completing their upgrades so that I can get those roads back onto my 10-year road plan. I have not heard back from them yet, but I anticipate those numbers to come in so that I can fine tune my road plan and then get that out to all the departments as well.
Can I ask you a question about paving?
Sure.
So once again, we cut into a newly paved road, Cedar Street.
The sewer department.
Yes.
Yes.
Are we, are we going to just keep, I, I thought we had a policy. Was it an emergency? Was it, I mean?
It was an emergency. That residence system had failed. They reached out to me and asked if they could tie into the Cedar Street main. I gave them permission with the understanding that I was going to have R and D paving do the work for paving into Cedar Street and that the resident was going to be responsible for that tonnage of material, for that handwork. It worked out that we had a paving company contracted by us to do some work in that area. They were already in there doing Spruce Street. So I asked R and D paving to keep it itemized, separated, so that when I get that bill, I can forward it to sewer and they'll take care of it. There, there is a policy in place. But like, if it's an emergency, a failed septic system that now wants to tie into the sewer lane. I feel like I should give permission to do so because it is an emergency. If it was like routine maintenance or, or things like that. Then obviously I would, I would want to discuss it a little bit further.
No, if it's an emergency, it's fine. It's just, it's the second time.
Second time.
In the sewer department that dug into that road.
So you are correct.
I'll leave it at that. I just, I had to bring it up because it looked like they were just doing that. I didn't know it was one house. It just looked like that, that whole side of the road of Spruce Street was dug up. There we go, they go right into the Cedar Street.
Yeah, no, they had to make that run to connect it to the sewer lane.
That one, it went from, it went over to the, it wasn't, it was a house on Spruce Street.
It was a house on Spruce Street.
Yeah.
It was on the, the bend, the turn.
And there was one other one aside from that one you said? That they dig up the street?
Oh, it was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, it was right after the project had completed.
Yeah, oh no.
Yeah.
But it does say in our ordinance, in case it's an emergency, then.
So yes.
But it's up to you.
The, so I'll get to the savings, the financial savings. So when I submitted this bid, it would, we decided on R and D paving. Their complete price, first phase, second phase was 382,025. Their new adjusted price because of the reduction in roads is now 244,345. There's $137,000 savings. Eventually I'm going to pay it, obviously, when we pave the roads, but as if this budget year and next budget year that is money we're not spending. Which ties into my budget for next year. Since there is a reduction in work next year or, or costs next year. I felt that I should reflect that in my budget as well. So I had a meeting with Tim. Usually there is $90,000 put into that account for my roads and bridges. This year we adjusted it to 75. We feel that that's a, a very good figure going forward to cover the cost of work for next year. So that was, that was a nice realization to have as far as we're having some savings this year and next year because the work is reduced. So why not carry it over into the budget and show it to try to help?
Does that mean that next year or the year after it's right back up to 90 and maybe 100?
Depending on the work.
So everybody's clear on that. It's a short term.
It is. It is, because we're all, I, I'm anticipating a tough year next year financially. And I think everybody kind of shares that thought process. And I'm trying to save as much as I can with, within my budget for next year as well.
I appreciate that you're saving that, but in the long term, if you roller coast it like that, people aren't going to understand that if you 15,000, if you were saving 137,000, that would make a difference, but you're saving 15 of the 90. So could you use that 137,000 and do another road that you're not anticipating next year? And save it in that area rather than 15,000?
I, I definitely could. I should share with you my plan for next year. Next year is designated to Academy Street. And Academy Street only. My goal is to, to see Academy Street done next year. And possibly some sidewalk work. But my focus next year is definitely Academy Street. So with the money that I have in that account now, plus the savings going into next year, we feel that that amount of money is adequate to get that project done and some sidewalk work.
So I've fielded a bunch of calls, kind of residents. Morrison, now presently we've got it was three years ago, we put the berm in because water was flowing down. The guy's basement flooded and cracked his foundation and all that. At that time, the former director, not you, made a promise that next year they were going, it was on the list. And I was trying to made a promise that next year they were going. It was on the list for a ten year plan to do it because his foundation and house cracked. Yeah. Along with some drainage issues, you know, the drain down there. Recently, another neighbor had to install a concrete berm because the way the road is pitched, I don't know if it rises more or stuff sinks, but the water was flowing into his front door, into his living room. Thanks. So when you approach their door, you'll have to step up over a step about this high and then down again to get into the living room. And you know, what's that about three hundred, five hundred feet, something like that? If you go up there, there's, I think there's eight to ten places in the last two years that the water pipes have broken. And as recently as yesterday, there was another one dug up and done. So it's every couple of months, everybody loses water. I brought in a piece of pipe from that road that nobody I would drink water from that. Residents also have, and I know that has nothing to do with you because we don't do water. The residents, if in the mornings, when people are taking showers, have reduced water pressure. They have laundry, you know, that draws neighbors running laundry, then other ones don't get it. And there and then when Honda was going in, we delayed it a year because and we were gonna survey it because we were gonna do it two years ago. And we said we'd survey the road when we reclaimed it or redid it after Honda was done. That got kicked off and that was for, I don't know when its actual date is, that got kicked off. So I do not get water from that street. So I have no concern with my water. Fortunately, out front, we have a lot of residents, we have property that's getting damaged from the drainage. And I think it's, you know, if we push it off another year, these people are gonna be, you know, constantly without water. Their drainage, they've had property damage, they're gonna need a berm down at the end again too because that's got scraped up. So is there any way we can go and at least do, you know, the reclaim in a first coat?
I I can reach out to some, I can send out a request to some companies to get an estimate on repaving that road. I can figure out what we need for drainage upgrades to make it better for everybody. And see if I can work it into next year. I was not aware of that promise that was made by the previous director.
No.
And with so again, I'm gonna share some more information. I believe that road was scheduled for twenty twenty three. Had I not been given some restrictions this year in my ten year road plan had been left alone, I guess you could say, it would have been done on time. So I tried to make blocks of work because of the savings we get per ton in asphalt. Obviously, I can make some exceptions in that road. So what I could probably do or what I should do with this new information is get a quote on Morrison Ave grant and what was the old police stations for? Copeland. I should get an estimate on those two. Yes, they're they're not big roads. If I can get a a quote on those three roads altogether, we might be able to save some money on tonnage and get them done next year as well. Because there is, there is another factor here, you know, I'm planning on doing Academy Street next year, but we we might run into some more struggles with that project. And here I am with an entire year designated to that one road. When if it doesn't come about, then maybe I should rethink the the project list and get some something done. So it's I was gonna suggest contingency plan. Well.
I, yes. Yeah, and the sewer goes up down Morrison.
So.
It's right right now. It's a pipe that's like spinning around.
And I believe Morrison Ave was on the the do not pave list from the water department because they need they need to do upgrades.
That's the next question I was gonna ask.
Yes. I mean, yes, that is on the list for us not to touch or not to pave until they've done their upgrades.
I'm gonna ask a question that you may not have the answer to, and that's okay. The way that you, I mean, you you have supplied the water district with your your road plan. We know that, okay? Have they given you in return what their priority list is in terms of replacement in terms of the water?
No.
Okay.
I haven't seen that either.
And I'm just thinking that because this is, as we acknowledged at that meeting, when it came about sort of with a quick side conversation, that that's important for you and your budgeting. It's important for them and their budgeting too. So I think I would have to say however we or we as municipality or outside your office can assist in sort of nudging that along so that we get the knowledge that if if the water district has X street as the number one priority, two, three, because we obviously have found out that with the paving projects here, that they've got some priorities that are up above on prospect.
Now, so, okay, I am waiting for that information because I did ask John with the water department to share information when they can complete their projects so that I can adjust my ten year road plan accordingly. And I am I am waiting for that information.
I understand this is obviously not an indictment of you. It's just about how can we start to?
Well, as a result of the last meeting that I attended, I have started email communication and obviously trying to to open up that communication line. And hopefully it goes both ways.
That's it's so I like the fact that we are sending it out our way. So, Mr. Pirate, and then Gene had a question.
Well, I love the fact that you're saving money. But the reality is that the cost of everything is going up. So what get what you get for ninety thousand dollars in twenty twenty two is not gonna be what you get for ninety thousand dollars in twenty twenty four, which would be when your next major paving projects are gonna happen. So as much as I hate to say it, would it be better to save it or, you know, have that extra already accounted for so that we don't have to go, oh, now, well, we saved fifteen thousand last year, but now we have thirty thousand because the cost of everything went up. So I I don't know. I don't know what you see for future prices. You know, we've talked a lot about C CPI. I don't know if there's one for paving. I have no idea, but you know, it just seems like the cost of everything is going up. So if we can put a little away to save the offset in the future, I know it's gonna be tougher here.
I mean, I can definitely sit with Tim again and 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 adjust. I I was focused on next year and trying to trying to bring my ultimate goal, obviously, is to reduce my budget so that it affects the tax rate and everybody can be a little bit more comfortable next year. But the long distance thinking, you know, twenty twenty four, that might be a good thing to to consider. So I can talk with Tim again.
Sorry, Tim, give you more work to do. Sorry. Just just my thought at all.
It's hard to get the financial Christmas ball up to two years ahead.
To give you an example of the increase just for this year, the cost of salt.
Nice segue.
Yeah.
I guess clarification. So back to Morrison Ave. I heard John says there needs to be survey work done. Does the survey work need to be done before paving happens?
Like, there was questions on the where the road actually is.
I do remember that I don't recall that the board actually said, get a survey done. I know there was a lot of talk about it, but my question is, if the board wants to have it done, does that need to be done before the work gets done? The reason I ask is because everything's very much delayed. So if that's something the board wants to have a survey, then they need to get quotes and see when it can get fit into the system to be ahead of what Kevin was gonna do.
I I would definitely feel more comfortable with the survey to know where the road is.
On that road.
Exactly.
So do you want me to get quotes? Just for all Morrison Avenue?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I thought that when we had that issue with your neighbor, that it was a survey done.
You know, that road wasn't surveyed in there was a resident on Morrison Ave that was arguing where the actual boundary of.
We talked, we talked about having a survey and we got a price that was in the thousands and talked about the consequences of that survey and decided not to spend the money. Potential consequences of that survey.
For that, when the road got done. I remember, I I think we said that when the road gets done, we'll figure out where it actually should be.
Well, here we go. That would put us in line for a survey, right?
Sort of like put it to bed for.
Yes, one way or the other.
I see the eyebrows.
Where we potentially ran.
Right. So you are saying yes.
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 Yeah.
And I will, sorry, can I speak?
Yeah, please go ahead, Kevin.
I'll reach out.
The quotes anyway. It will talk about.
I just wanted to mention that I'll reach out to the water department and ask where that road lies on their priority list. Ask them to maybe make that a definite priority.
Yeah. That would be good. So that we characters have to ask questions about cutting into newly paved roads again.
So I had one more question. Now presently, there's no drainage. It's pitched. It runs and it gets to the drain. And so I don't know where if you have to any drainage issues or just the way it pitches, what are you talking about?
Well, in that area there, I should probably try to catch the water, put it below grade and then put it to the catch basin that's already at the end of Morrison near the state road, three or Laconia Road is called. So that that would be my goal to put it to catch the water, put it below grade so that nobody has to deal with it.
Right, because it changed when they did the change with the trail behind it. Out of the back end of where Mayor Welding was and some of that road dipped when they redid that pot. There was a drainage in the where it came down on that right hand side. That's gone.
I I trust you. Drainage stuff you've always pulled it off. Good.
Okay.
It's less work in the end.
Oh, definitely. So I'm thinking that I should probably rework my numbers for the budget to not be so strict for next year and maybe think of it more of a long term twenty three, twenty four type scenario. Then maybe sit from the board again. Does that sound like a plan?
Seems like
Oh, it's okay. I get.
Ten percent this year. I don't see, I like to think that it's gonna level off, but if it goes up another ten percent next year, then our money is worth ten percent less. We've got the money right now if we can do it and we'll get ten percent more for the money we're spending. But I know I know there are issues all over. Trying to coordinate this.
Sure.
Is is there any of what's going on with next year at Academy? Can we encumber out of this month, this year's monies?
By blocks or so.
Oh, I see what you're saying. That's definitely an option. Yeah, I could get with Tim, see what we have for extra money and maybe buy some materials that I can stock.
Which would save the taxpayers money.
Absolutely. Yeah, I've got the real estate to save and stockpile. So, yeah, absolutely. That's a
Worth looking into, I think. Nobody knows what's gonna happen.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Just before you leave, I thought since you're here, can we talk about Academy Street before you leave? Just kind of bring this up. There have been some issues on Academy Street. I don't know if any one of the selectmen have talked to one of the property owners on Academy Street. He did say he was gonna join the meeting tonight. They don't see him on the screen. I did tell him your business was at nine thirty, so he may be joining that. But he's essentially, as you know, the road is failing over there. So Kevin has put barriers up and this individual has some concerns about the barriers. Kevin has addressed some of those concerns. Putting reflectors on the barriers. I walked up there today to take a look at what the individual was mentioning. And I think Kevin, you could just tell the board what you've done so that you have this information. He does call in tonight. You understand Kevin's perspective, so.
Okay, so one of his concerns was there were no reflective surfaces on the blocks. So we installed some reflective squares on the oncoming side because the road is now one way. So we were actually, I think they're on both sides.
They are on both sides. I drove through today.
Sure. On each side of the block, all the way down, I had one of my crew members actually consolidate the blocks around the failed area and kind of straighten them out a little bit. We're trying to consolidate space for snow plowing this winter. The blocking is well within the that lane of travel, that opposite retaining wall side, I should say. It's about four feet from the edge of the road, four to five feet off from that edge of the road. And it's obviously it's just there to keep people from driving a vehicle too close to that failed edge. That's what its purpose is. So I I haven't received any complaints from any trucks navigating down through there. The trash truck, any delivery trucks, school buses, I haven't filled with any complaints about any of that type of travel. When I first learned of of this resident and the issues that he was having, obviously, I went right up there to see what was going on. I don't know how I could adjust anything without sacrificing safety. That's the best way I could put it. They are there in place to keep people safe.
What is what is his concern?
Turning the turning radius in and out of his driveway. It's restricting to his personal truck and he had a he had a tenant back into one of the blocks. Like I said, I don't know how to adjust the blocks without sacrificing safety. They're they're not encroaching on his side of the road. It's they they are placed, in my opinion, well out of the way of any turning radius into the driveway. So.
I did I did not have to deal with the turning radius today, but I can tell you that even with a car that was parked on the north side of the street in front of that furthest the house furthest west, I was able to easily get one of our Tilton School mini buses through that area with the space. Just I mean, that's I had to I had to go. I was on Academy Street four times today, taking kids to and from spots. So just using that as reference. And there was plenty of room. It's there was plenty of room to get that. So just using that as reference. And there was plenty of room. It's, there was plenty of room to get back.
I missed you.
Mr. Skin.
Unless you already put it away, would it be possible to put in the fog lining?
Oh, sure.
You know, the whole.
Yeah, the painted line.
The white line. That's the edge of the road.
You know, I did put the equipment away, but I definitely take.
They can spray paint.
I'm one of those, any of those old school battery operated flashing nuts.
I do.
You know, I was just like, I mean, there's another thing where it's.
It'll be stolen.
East, west.
Yeah. No. The, I do have the glass beads that are used in the line painting equipment to make the painted lines reflective. So I could definitely do something like that.
I thought you were going to close off Academy for the winter.
That was a, that was an idea that was being thrown around. I think that was going to create too many.
The weight of the, the weight of the trash truck and the weight of the school bus, is that actually safe with the, the failure? That in that whole piece? Because when you shoot pictures of this, the, I want to say heat signatures that you had, it opened holes underneath.
Oh, the voids, the sonogram.
Wait, the sonogram pictures would.
That was one of the questions the resident had. But is it safe for heavy vehicles to travel on the road?
Or maybe a weight restriction? We do that for Fropsy. It seems like it would be prudent to do it for the, the road falling off a cliff.
You think of a school bus and then you add 50 kids on it. Quite a weight.
I'm not against putting a weight restriction on.
We could send them up to Hillsbury down if you needed to be.
Let's wait a few days till it's paid.
Yes.
It's already been reclaimed.
Oh, it has.
Yeah.
I, I guess I had a couple of conversations with somebody with the school.
So yes, I think it was Jen.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, yes, it was. I watched the machine. It was like a five year old.
So we can revisit that after it's. And then see if we close off, you know, next meeting, we close it off for the winter. And then just open it to residents and the water company only.
So I anticipate this property owner having an issue with us closing the road. Because I am aware of his concerns with his tenants being able to turn around and exit the road or people going, driving down that road to use his property to turn around to leave. Because they know it's, it's not a three-way. So there are some other concern, but there are some.
You would still have it one way, open one way to residents only, right? You have to.
Proceed at your own rate.
You have to, if, if the road is closed only to residents only, you have to have the, if this residence is living on the road, you have to maintain it for those residents.
Okay.
In case of emergency.
Fuel deliveries.
Completely.
Unless it was washed away.
Fuel deliveries and trash.
Sure.
They, they get exempted on.
So limiting use.
You can put a weight restriction.
Sure.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
My key.
Local traffic only.
Or if you are confusing it, it's through the, you know.
Because you've got winter coming and then you have all the people that are going to use the hill. That's a lot of traffic going on, on that. Plus, you know, you have school buses and trash pickup and a lot of trucks.
Yes. Okay.
That don't want to be downtown. They take that.
One more thing, and I don't know who, but I'm going to ask Kevin because he was involved in this. Streetlights. There's one opposite new car by the old bank, you know, who has the circle around it. That's didn't get replaced.
Oh.
And there I noticed because it's the yellow, also equal to the street that's got that other color. The other thing is, I don't know what Sherwood, but I looked down there and that's all old stuff. And I know. Now we.
Could be a state.
Uh, no, it's not.
Okay.
It's, and it looks, it's, I'm asking Kevin to take a look and see.
I'd definitely take a look.
On the list or what. The other thing is, I know we maintained Sherwood Drive. Do we plow it?
Yes.
And those roads, those lights weren't done.
They weren't on the list.
I mean. So that, I mean, the only one that would be important would be the one, because there's a crosswalk right there too, at the new car. Oh, that one. I know which one. Yeah, right by.
Yeah.
Where somebody got hit a few years back.
Mr. Jessman.
Oh, yeah. I mentioned this a few meetings ago, but, and it may well be taken care of because I haven't been up there in the dark. Time table maybe? Yeah, there's a light in front of time table maybe, but I liked it up great. Except once you drive past the shelf station across the way, that light shines right in your eyes. So I just, I don't know if it got mentioned because it was just on the side, but.
I had, I had issues where people were actually moving, turning that light away from either the apartment building. Or we had some, we had some people that were using the fountain.
Oh, my goodness.
So they didn't want the light shining on them as they were washing their hair, things like that. So we, I mean, there's an effort to be clean. So there's, you know, there is that. But I actually, I have noticed how bright it is. And I was actually thinking, maybe we could adjust the wattage. So maybe it's not so bright.
Make it sort of like mood lighting as opposed to a spotlight.
A deflector shield maybe to, to keep it from oncoming traffic's eyes. So I am aware and working on it. Yes.
And it's, it's off now because of the cold, correct, is the fountain.
The fountain has been winterized. That's correct.
But the light's not on.
No, the light's still.
Looks nice.
Yes, I think maybe a little fine tuning would be great.
Sure.
You're the man with the plan.
I try to have a plan.
I know you do. I know you do.
Anything else for Kevin?
I have one thing that's not so nice.
No kidding?
No. I, yeah, trick or treat. I was going to bring it up online, but while you're here, I'm going to bring it up. Trick or treat. I got two phone calls. I mean, it was an awesome night, awesome night. But I got two phone calls the next morning. Apparently, the people, there was one particular dog owner that didn't pick up after her dog. And there was several little kitties that decided that they were going to step in it in front of sniff and tuck and now it's all over the sidewalk. I told you it wasn't pretty. So we could take it. It was a very big dog. That's all I had to say. But that was the only negative that I heard about trick or treat.
So they take, they took curbing your dog, literally.
Yeah, sidewalking your dog.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks, Kevin. What? He got carried away. He wants to do a dog paw raid next year.
I would love to do that.
A paw raid.
There needs to be laws and regulations.
Not a paw raid, but a paw.
Mr. Pearson. Mr. Pearson, we're ahead of schedule and we expected to stay that way. That's.
So you just jinxed it.
That's a directive from the town administrator, by the way.
Oh, believe me, I know her feelings on the topic.
You just, you just jinxed us.
Someone has to. I haven't jinxed this in a while.
Well, no time like the present. First of all, thank you very much for seeing me tonight. I have a lot to cover. If, has everyone had an opportunity to take a look at my report?
Yes.
Great. All right. So then we should be able to move through some of these fairly quickly. First of all, I just want to point out, and I'll be discussing it later with the tax rate, but the tax bills are unlikely to go out until late November. And hopefully sooner than later, but I'll get into that later. In the, in the interim, we need to borrow more money. And so in your to be signed folder is a, a request to withdraw, draw down $1.1 million to carry us over. In your to be signed folder is also an actuarial engagement letter. So this actually covers two years. The cost is $3,650. This is the same company we've used in the past, and they're one of the more reasonable ones. Number of towns use them. And I would request that, that someone make a motion to accept that and that it be signed by the board, please.
So, second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you. In addition, in our budget, and when we go through it, and you'll see the, the tipping fees for Wheel Ograder or WTI or wind waste, whichever name they're using now. And for 2023, our price per ton will be $85 per ton for tipping fees. So currently, we bill the, the haulers, the commercial haulers in town $75. So we need to raise the, obviously raise the fee. And in addition, in the past, we've always had some type of buffer over and above that to cover our administrative fees and expenses. So what I'm recommending, because each year, this, this number is going to jump quite a bit. It's going from 85 to 90, 95, 90 to 95, and so on and so forth. So I'm recommending that the board establish a two and a half percent administrative fee and then round it to the nearest dollar, whether that's dollar higher, dollar lower, based on where the cents fall. So for the year 2023, two and a half percent would equate to a $2 increase. And that would set the rate for commercial haulers at $87 per ton. A year from now, we would notify them based on the $90 per ton, the two and a half percent over that rounded either down or up to the nearest whole dollar. And, and that two and a half percent would stay in effect until the Board of Selectmen changed the administrative percentage.
That would be in addition to the increase at the incinerator.
That's correct. So just on the, the, our cost of tipping at the incinerator, that's correct. So it would, the board would establish a two and a half percent administrative fee. And then it would be up to the, to my office and the selectman's office to, to notify the haulers each year and to ensure that they're properly noticed and that that fee was added so that we, we have that in place each year. The two and a half percent would stay in effect until the Board of Selectmen would change that percentage or, or the method of determining the administrative fee.
Is two and a half percent enough to cover our increased administrative cost?
It is. And I've done the calculation on it. It, it is. Yes.
I moved the recommendation from the finance director on the haul rates.
It was the administrative. Right?
Right. I.
Just put it under.
Yes.
Put it under the haul rate. I moved that we impose the administrative fee of 2.5% over the towns to being people. Cost rounded to the nearest whole dollar for commercial haulers. For 2023, the towns' cost of $85 per ton will generate $2 administrative costs for total of 87 commercial haul costs. This fee will adjust as the towns' cost of changes and will stay in effect until the administrative fee percentages change by the books.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to skip the next item as I'll be talking to you about that in non-public. Item five on the next page is regarding the police building fund closure and housekeeping item. So back in April, I had put in my report about a, a housekeeping issue, a shortfall in the police building fund and the need to move fund balance to make up the difference. So really, it's accounted for currently, but as of the end of 2021, we had a deficit of $159,268 anticipating we were going to be receiving grants and additional donations prior to that. The donations didn't materialize, but we did receive additional grants and that brought the, the total deficit down to just less than $80,310. Our unassigned fund balance for the purposes of, of budgeting is $1,079,814. So by authorizing this, this transfer of our unassigned fund balance of $80,310 into the police building fund, it effectively closes, you know, it, it reconciles that fund and it allows the Board of Selectmen to close it at that point. So it is something that we do, we do need to do this housekeeping item, or it could be an audit, an audit point, negative audit point.
Make a motion to authorize the transfer from the other side fund balance to the.
Police building.
Police building fund in the amount of $80,310. Good enough.
Roll a second.
Would the board also like to close the fund following the transfer?
Good enough. I moved that we have, I will withdraw my original motion.
I'll withdraw a second.
Move that we authorize the transfer of up to $80,350 of the unassigned fund balance to the police building fund in order to close the building fund now that the project is complete.
Roll a second. Motion and second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank you. My next item is regarding our 2023 tan. So as you may be aware, yesterday, the Federal Reserve met an increased rate 75 basis points and indicated that, that they were unlikely to ease anytime soon. So they've been, they've been talking about the soft landing for a while now, but the soft landing kind of predicates higher unemployment. So while it sounds contrary to what a soft landing would be for the economy, the way they look at this is unemployed. The, the tight employment market is also causing part of this inflation, the demand for products and people having enough money to buy these products. So by, by them looking at the soft landing, I really, I don't have a great deal of confidence that, that we're not going to see possibly more tightening and, you know, higher rates in the near term. I think personally, after everything I've looked at, and Jeannie and I attended a, an economic forum for economic projections into the new year for state and local government. And as far as I can tell, I think we'd be lucky to see some kind of rate easing, maybe in the third or fourth quarter of '23, if, if at all. So we have an opportunity and, and this is one of the reasons why it really pays to have a good relationship with one's bank. The, the bank right now would be establishing a tan at about a three, three quarters percent figure. It is very likely, based on this current three quarters percent increase or 75 basis point increase, that come January, we would be looking at north of four and a half or somewhere in that neighborhood, four to 5% for a tan. We have the opportunity because we're within 60 days of the new year to lock in a rate of three and three quarters percent for the year. So what that does for us is it gives us a, you know, a, a number we can count on. You know, our rate's going to drop to 2% come February and we're going to be sitting here thinking, gee, you know, we really made a bad decision on that. I think not. I think the, the trend is higher. There's no sign that, that they're easing is, is going to. There's no sign that their easing is going to stop, or their tightening is going to stop anytime soon, and they'll start easing. So again, I think, you know, I mean, the worst case is that maybe in the second, late second quarter, sometime in the summertime, maybe they start to back off a little bit. But at least this is something we can count on, and we won't be subject to, say, a 6% or 7% number, you know, should that, should something bad happen between now and February, when we typically establish these. So my recommendation would be to authorize the commencement of this. And I have to work really hard to get them figures by the 16th of this month for their loan committee, which is a little challenging, because generally, we're past the end of the year, and I've got, I'm going to have to, have to pull together a lot of things that I wouldn't normally have at this time of year, but I believe we can do it. And also, it gives us something that we can count on for the year. I think that's a reasonable percentage, particularly in this uncertain economic environment. So the only change I would have to the motion that I have here, if you are in agreement, is that, and this is when we get talking about the budget and warrant articles. If we have a bond warrant article, which it looks likely that we will have a bond warrant article in the '23 warrant, if we do, we will be required to use the bond counsel for our tax anticipation note, or we may have to use our bond counsel for the tax anticipation note. That costs more than the typical counsel that we use for this. So I'd be looking for the board to, by consensus, approve up to $3,000 for the TAN legal services, but to leave that out of the motion that I would have to provide to the bank. So I would, if anyone is going to, is inclined to use the motion that I provided, I would end the motion after the stating of the 3.75% and put a period there. So it's kind of a bird in the hand, tune the bush, so kind of situation.
So stop at 3.75%.
Correct.
I move that the town initiate up to a $22,500,000 line credit tax and anticipation note, which is the TAN, with Franklin Savings Bank for 2023, with a rate of interest not to exceed 3.75% period.
Roll a second. Motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. So item seven in our tax rate setting, I assume that the, there's a consensus up to the $3,000 mark for the legal services if we're, if we're. If needed, based on, you know, I want to spend as little as possible. Okay, thank you. Oh, believe me, I know. So item seven in the tax rate. So unfortunately, we are, we're going to be waiting. We have to wait until after the Fire District Special Meeting on the 12th of the month. And they have a certain number of days by which they can report back to DRA. There was still some information missing from the school, so I really don't have any good information for either Fire or School, which is going to really drive the amount of fund balance. So I'm going to recommend that the board consider using, and I'll have various amounts for you at that point. But it could, unfortunately, this could really push us into, you know, hopefully, we have the tax bills out by the end of the month. Our current 2022 TAN is due and payable by 12/31. So we need to get that cash flow coming in. And also, the other aspect of this, there's two other aspects if the bills go into the new year. One is that there's now a cap on property tax deductions of about $10,000. So if for some reason someone had a property that exceeded $10,000 and they paid their '22 bill and '23, and their '23 bill and '23, they'd only be able to deduct $10,000. So that would, that would be unfortunate. So it puts taxpayers in a bad situation for their own taxes. And then also, for those people that have escrow accounts, it really wreaks havoc with a bank looking at the, you know, the increases and the timing of things. So, and Kim, the Town Clerk Tax Collector, she is anxious to get the bills out as anyone. We're just at the mercy of parties outside our control.
What's going on with the school? Why don't we have it from the school?
So they have new employees at the school, and they, I talked to the Chair of the School Board. They did get one of their reports in, which is basically their balance sheet report. But there was another report, their revenue report, not only has to get into DRA, but it has to go through the process at DOE, Department of Education. And it's not a, it's not a quick process through DOE, but that will probably be done before the Fire District Special Meeting. So more than likely, the one thing we'll be waiting on at that point in time is the Fire District. And, you know, and that's, unfortunately, that's just where we are. A lot of towns in the state have yet to set a tax rate, partly because the legislature had also enacted legislation to reduce the, to return money from New Hampshire retirement contributions that towns are making over a certain period of time in '22, and I believe it carries over into '23. And DRA, just Department of Registration, Department of Revenue, just received from the Treasury what those amounts were just this last week. So those were intended to be either used as revenue for the towns or to reduce taxes, which I think was really the legislature's intent, was to reduce taxes. For the town of Tilton, that's, that amount is $18,933. The other thing is that I found out that we have a significant increase in our rooms and meals. So that's going to go up almost $80,000 and a small increase in our highway block grant. There was a slight reduction in our, in our state revenue for pollution grant, a very small reduction. So in any event, I am, I'm prepared with, with models, as you know, I've used in the past, so that we can quickly set the rate once we have that information from those groups.
Mr. Jessman.
To move that we apply any of the legislative refund to New Hampshire Retirement System contributions to reduce the 2022 tax rate. This is estimated to be $18,933.
Roll a second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Great, thank you. In addition, there is a change. I put down the, in number, item number eight, the budget meeting schedule. So they did meet last night. National Selectmen Rebels may have an update for you on that, but next week, I thought that I was going to be providing the department recommended budget, but that's going to be pushed out to December. So you can see also what they have scheduled for November 16th. So that brings us to two items, the budget. And then maybe before we go through the budget, I'd like to just give you an update on our financial summary. So you'll see that the financial summary was probably underneath your budget. I just want to let you know, with those increases in the state revenues, I anticipate we're going to be right at about 100% by the end of the year for revenues. We're going to be right in that ballpark, which would pretty much be a first. And for expenses, we're, as you can see, right now, we're at 75% spent. I anticipate we're going to be somewhere in the 88% to 90% spent for the year, meaning that that's going to allow us about a $500,000 to $600,000 addition to our unassigned fund balance. So the reason why I mention that is it, and the numbers from the school are important to consider, because last year, we received almost a $1 million reduction in school tax. This year, that's going to be back in, but they're returning somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.6 million to the three towns, but I don't know what our portion of that is at this point, till I see, you know, the numbers from DRA. So, so I believe that we're going to, in the amount of fund balance we're going to use, I think we could still, even though this isn't going to be fund balance until, you know, it's all settled, reconciled, and audited, this $500,000 or $600,000 here. It's entirely possible that we might be looking at $400,000 returning to taxpayers and then seeing a net increase. So that might give the Board the possibility of looking at some of the high priority projects that need to be done. There's a couple of safety issues here in Town Hall. The chimney was deemed to be failing, and I know there's other issues in the building, the roof. You know, so there are things of that sort that, that the Board could look at, you know, making a priority and encumbering. So what we would require for that is we'd need to get some type of contract in place for, you know, whoever's going to do the work prior to the end of the year, assign contract or purchase order, and that would be sufficient to encumber the funds, so that we don't have to raise by taxation next year for any of those projects. So in any event, it's, you know, and this is a, this is a really tough thing, because I have really grimaced when I've seen other, other towns and school districts, you know, they have a lot of money left over at the end, and they buy a truckload of, you know, paper pallets, or, you know, paper or something, or something that they use. Selectmen's candy, right, you know. So, so, you know, it's, it's one of those things, this is the taxpayers' money. We anticipated to spend this money because of the plan at the beginning of the year, but primarily, the majority of the savings are, again, as you all know, because we've been unable to meet the hiring schedule and fill positions that were open during the year. So that's why we have these monies left over, or anticipated to be left over by the end of the year. So having said that, and you can certainly, you know, if you have any questions on any of the current expenditures or revenues, I'm happy to answer those, but otherwise, I would move on to the budget, if you like.
Just going along with what you're saying, I think, you know, with people a little concerned about fuel prices and availability this winter, that it might be very prudent to make sure people get, some might go back to reducing their taxes.
Exactly.
For the fuel bills.
Yep.
It seems to be.
I completely agree.
I appreciate you looking at it that way, too.
Well, and that's, that's why when we get to the warrant articles and you consider the idea of paving, which I think, you know, these are all good discussions with the Public Works Director, but the other thing to consider is, you know, depending upon how you want to apply the resources of the town, i.e. money, you know, there are other options. Where we have a, maybe a five-year schedule for a road, maybe it becomes a seven-year schedule for a road, or, you know, you know, I mean, there are ways of looking at these things, other than to say, it's going to cost us more down the road, let's spend more money now. Maybe another way to kind of balance that on some of these, these, I'm not saying necessarily roads, but other things as well, is to see if we can't extend the life of, or find ways to, you know, get more economic value out of the things that we are spending money on. So anyway, getting to the budget, unless anyone else has any questions on that topic. So if you look at the first page, this really gives you the bird's eye view. And there's really the part at the bottom, when you remove the encumbrances from the budget comparison, this is really the number you're looking at prior to moving encumbrances into '22, which is a 1.7% increase. This 2022 authorized budget that totals $5,619,071. So that is, that's the authorized budget that you see at the end of your financial summary report. It shows all the encumbrances that were brought in from the prior year, because those now are part of the budget. But someone that went to town meeting would say, well, wait a minute. I don't remember voting for, you know, $5,619,000. So that's a, that, you can see how we get to that number by the, that last page in the financial summary report. But taking that number out, you can see the $5,49882 is compared to the $5,582,000 number, so $91,890 increase, or 1.7%. In relation to the authorized budget and the departmental budgets, you can see what the percent changes are. The big item there is the increase in long-term debt, which I've covered with you before. The decreases are primarily in Public Works, and we've discussed some of those before, the sanitation as well, which is a combination of the elimination of curbside recycling collection, and then also a reduction in street lighting expense. But I did not budget in the entire savings of the street lighting expense, because we're anticipating the transmission expense is going to be higher. So we're still saving money, we're just not saving as much as was in the model from Affinity when they presented it. So if anything, we're being conservative in that, in that respect. Another item that, that we received was that the janitorial contract that I had discussed before, that was a 46% increase, they did come back, and after some discussions with them, they came back and revised their proposal to be 15% higher than the current year. However, they did that through two means. So their, their, their regular rate is $60 per hour, all loaded in. And they're spending, they were spending 17, roughly 17.65 hours across our buildings, and they're reducing that to 13.65 hours. So they're taking a, right now, they're taking a cleaning out of the police department, and they're taking one of our two cleanings out of here. So right now, we're cleaned here in Town Hall, I think it's Wednesday and Friday, is that correct? So it'd be once a week, instead of twice a week. So, so by doing that, that 46% increase that we were looking at originally is now down to a 15% increase. However, they accomplished that primarily by reducing services to us. And I believe we discussed the last time we went through the budget that there could be an opportunity for a combination custodian slash transfer station attendant, because the Public Works Director wants to increase the hours of the transfer station, and this could be a position that could do both. And back in, as I mentioned, I think back in 2010, 11, we had such a person that was just doing the custodial work and not, not working at the transfer station. But, and in this budget, we have, we have a, I'd have to count the positions, but it's, we have a position that would be, that would accomplish that. So right now, we have both the reduced contract in the janitorial lines, and the Public Works Director has a position that he would characterize as a custodian slash transfer station attendant. So really, we, we probably need to do a little more work in looking at, you know, how, what the rate would have to be for that person. There's a rate plugged in, but obviously, it's not going to do any good if we can't hire someone. So the, so the idea would be to go on a month-to-month with the current company into the new year at the rate that we have budgeted. And then if we're able to hire someone, you know, do that at some point in time and then end that contract. So that would, that would be the high-level plan for that. Is that fairly characterized? The only other thing I wanted to bring up, that I can't recall whether I discussed the. the, I think I had the Lake Street Mutual Fire Aid Number in the last in the last budget, so that is listed here. And then there are a couple of items that I think, two items for the police department that the board should consider, or at least have the discussion with the police chief, which would be their sites and holsters that they'd like to swap out. And one of the benefits that I found out from going with these sites is that they're going to use less ammunition when they go to certify. So I don't recall the exact numbers that I was told, but if you use 60 before rounds, you might use 38 now. You have to hit a certain number when you're firing. So so in any case, the sites will help save a little bit of, a little bit of ammo expense, but more importantly, I think it's for accuracy and, you know, out in the field. So in any case, there's that one, and then also the IMC mobile piece. So the 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 holster, they they seem to be pretty well set for ammo right now, too, but the holster and that whole weapons line is about $12,000, and the IMC mobile with installation and services to get all the cruiser, their frontline cruisers, which are four, up to speed is about $13,000. So they'd be looking at about $25,000 if if and when you talk to the chief about those two items. In this budget is the maintenance for the IMC mobile, so that could come out if the board opts not to do that.
Is the public in danger from my police department with the current weapons that they're using?
I couldn't possibly answer that.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking of questions like how many times have we actually had to fire anybody? What exactly, when we're talking about hundreds of dollars of savings versus thousands of dollars worth of expense?
I think the the chief will be perfectly versed for.
Close to the chief.
Yep.
I like the idea of the sites, but that seems like one of those almost froo-froo things that Catherine used, the toys, what did she call them, the toys? And I get it, I get it, but and there's a reason, but do we really need it? That's my question that I'll ask.
Yeah, not for me. Yep, the and IMC mobile, that'd be the other item, and that, if you recall, that was one item that our former police chief noted felt was deficient in the, that the department didn't have, so.
Selectmen's. Did you decide on a number for merit?
Oh, yes, thank you for bringing that up. So in discussion since the last meeting, that as it relates to a department request and looking at at where the merit's been, where it is now, and what we're looking at in terms of costs and and how you've how you've made adjustments to salaries in the past that that we decided to stick with a 3%. So the 3% is in here, and I think it would be a mistake to go to the Budget Committee with a departmental request that didn't have any merit in the budget.
I have a follow-up then. Am I reading this incorrectly? Because if you look at some of the salaries, it says 1.5, 2.1.
So.
Is that what you anticipate, or is that so 4130, 130, 4130, 130 on page two?
Right. So so those represent the, those represent 22 increases. In other words, those are the base salaries over the course of the entire year of 23 as compared to the 22 budget. If you were to look for the merit pool line, you're going to see that in 413266. So that 80.
So that 8,007 is is representing a 3.
It's actually 8,825, right? The bold number represents the 3%.
8,007 is increased.
Well, and keep in mind, you know, we do a transfer out of the budget line into the salary lines and into the tax and New Hampshire retirement line, so it it always looks skewed in that sense, but but yes, that's correct. It's the 3%.
Thank you for explaining, and I'm really pleased that you went for the 3. Thank you.
So and I think Jeannie has one item that she'll be bringing up in non-public regarding salary expense. Other than that, on the, you know, it's pretty much the same, same format, same numbers, little else has changed. The.
They said one, it's insignificant, but if if somebody questions it in the budget, they may not think under the senior center, it's all adding an alternate. You say adding a board member, technically?
Oh, okay.
We actually added an alternate.
Okay, I will make.
In the notes.
Yep, I'm just don't see where it is. Well, there we are.
Page seven.
Right, okay.
And is the welfare director for this budget?
She did. Yep, yep. And she is concerned about expenditures in the new year and and what help will be available. But she has kept that that in place. I will note that that I did do some digging, Selectmen Scanlan had asked about alternates for Celebrate. I talked to people that have been trained in Celebrate, but we're, unfortunately, we're pretty heavily invested in this technology, and we just went through, you know, all this training for it, and it's specific to the the components that we have. So so and and, you know, we looked at, is there something that we could pare back to reduce the expense of the $6,100? And the ultimately, the answer that we came up with was, there really isn't any way around this, I contacted the company, I know that Abe's talked to them, or the chiefs talked to them, and so we think the better route to go is to try to get some corporate sponsorship, you know, towards the cost of that through a donation, which had existed in the past, and it's not a guarantee, it's in here at the full boat amount.
Have we painted ourselves into a corner with this Celebrate thing? Now we're forced to keep it?
Well, it's hard to, it's hard to say. You know, it is, it is used. I know it's, it's, we we do use it.
It's not, it's not a bad system, I'm not questioning this, but I just wondered if at this point, not even about going out to explore other options. And I get that, too.
Yeah. So you're right. I mean, we, you know, we we invested in the intellectual side of it, as well as the hardware and everything else side of it, and unfortunately, they they really have a lock on this market and have a lock on how they they proceed, so that if we were not to renew this on January 1st, it will cease to operate.
Are we, are we charging other towns for doing it?
I've talked to the chief about that, he's, he doesn't have a problem with that. We've only, so when we looked at who has used it in the past, the data that we could come up with has really only been one other, and I believe we're looking to bring that person on, as a matter of fact, that had come from another agency, so we're looking at hiring that person. So.
I know we've asked the question before, the pet has, it's just, I think, I think down the line, because if we become the, to be honest, sort of the sole provider of it, that would only be fair to be able to come up with a rate and a rate system that we would give to other municipalities who will do this, because as we talked about, it's taking our people off of what they need to do for for our PD, too. So just something that we can think about, I think, as a revenue stream.
So that, you know, that that pretty much, you know, in terms of the budget itself, that, you know, I can go through and show you where that $91,000 increase is, but that's that's pretty much it. I have outlined in the the PV and also in in the Public Works budgets, right underneath the headings, I outlined where the open positions are and what what positions those are, so that you can see the open positions that are outstanding. And then also, I have adjusted our 23 budgeted revenue based on updated state revenues that we received for rooms and meals and for highway block grant. And and then lastly, as we look at, look at fund balance and taxes and warrant articles, this is really where I'd like to spend a little time. So I don't have the October capital reserve figures, but they they haven't changed a great deal. We are getting significantly more interest than we used to, so that's good. But if you if you move on to page, the last page, I guess, where the warrant articles are, so so here is where you're going to find Cala Hill engineering costs. So this, this really brings this warrant to town meeting to say, do you want to raise an appropriate $100,000 for us to do this engineering work? So it would pay for that, and it also provides the the board with a final kind of, if people want to do it and they're willing to pay for it, great, because we will receive that money back. If they're not, then, you know, then we're going to know right then and there. So that, so you see what the tax impact of that is. The roads, streets, bridges, so this 75,000 that you see here right now, there's about 325,000 in the roads, streets and bridges fund. If you remove the the 244,000 for the R and D paving work that's going to be done this year and next, and then you take out the 50,000 for Academy Street and the sidewalk, it leaves about $31,000, $32,000 left in that account, which is too low. And so I really felt like we needed to keep at least a minimum of 100,000 in there. So by putting 75 in next year, that would bring us to about 106,000 in that capital reserve account. So really, it's it's an emergency basis for next year. I'm hoping, though, when, because I, you know, for those of you that have been around me long enough, you know that I hate tax rates that that look like heartbeats. You know, we have done everything, and the board's been great about in the past, you know, really trying to keep that as smooth as possible, because as a former business owner, it really stinks if, you know, one year it's this and the next year, where'd that come from? You know, and and you can't rely on on your your local government, you know, to try to help smooth those those edges. So so having said that, I I really think, you know, while we could continue to put as much money into every one of these, I think this was a good move on his part, recognizing that, you know, that we didn't need as much. He termed next year to me, now this was before the discussion of Morrison Avenue, so that may change the the whole, you know, view of this, but really is is a kind of a keep it simple next year, they've got, you know, two pro, two big projects, and, you know, try to spend as little as possible, you know, to really modulate his his budget. So and in doing so, looking at the highway equipment line, he said he is absolutely fine where he is right now with with the highway equipment money, and that he doesn't need to add any money into that account.
How much is in?
There's $40,101 right now, as of the end of September. So so we would look to probably put that back in place in 24, so that wouldn't be, you know, raised and appropriated in 23, but start back up in 24, and he felt he's in good shape with all his vehicles. So that was another, that was another item. So when I look at it, I'm looking at, he's reducing the burden, the tax burden by $50,000, 15 from roads, streets, bridges and and 35 from the highway equipment. The the island, we we kept the island the same as this year. Obviously, there's a lot to happen there. The revaluation is based on what we have to raise and appropriate for the the reval year. Improving and maintaining lakes, that was recommended by the Conservation Commission, that's the same amount, the senior center, same amount. The collective bargaining wage increase, which you had reviewed and approved before, that's that 48,000. So one item here that that I had taken off, and unfortunately, I didn't have an an opportunity to discuss this in length with the chief, but there is a good likelihood that we, with our forfeiture funds, that we that we are set to receive over the next year, hopefully. There's about $30,000, $31,000 to be released shortly, and there's about another $28,000 following that at some point in time during the year. It's a slow process, I think I've mentioned this before, and then we also have monies currently in the state and federal forfeiture funds. They can be used to purchase a a vehicle for, say, the detective's use. So that's a, you know, a valid purchase. So in other words, the the agency could purchase a outfitted Tahoe, and and it wouldn't come from taxpayer funds. It's just not going to happen prior to probably the end of the year. So but that was, that was taking out about a 60, I think it was 68,000 we had in there prior to that. We did want to establish a new warrant article for the structures, town structures, and that was the $20,000, and that would, that would be able to be used for any of the town buildings, for whatever might, you know, an infrastructure item within the building, you know, the boiler here goes out, the, you know, something happens elsewhere elsewhere in one of the buildings, we can, you know, we have money to address that. The, and then there's the bridge bond. So I'll leave that to Jeannie, but this is where, when I was talking about the tax anticipation note and the issues of a of legal counsel, where if we have bond counsel, working on a bond warrant article, they would, it would be, they would have to do the the other borrowing that we're doing for the year, which would be the tax anticipation note, and it's just unfortunately more expensive with a bond counsel. We would not pay for any legal services for the bridge bond were it not to not to pass. So their services are free up to that point, but if it passes and we go out and we borrow the money, there's there's fees associated with that, but you'll you'll have an engagement letter, you'll get to see those sorts of things. But I think on the police building bond, it was $7,500 for that, so for their work with that. And and it is a considerable amount of work because they have to fill out all the IRS forms, it has to be, they have to go through all the overlapping debt and make sure that everything is in place for bondholders. So in any case, the bridge bond, I think Jeannie was looking at $500,000 for a bridge bond warrant article, and that would also give direction as to, you know, what the townspeople want to do. Unfortunately, you know, half a million dollar bond isn't going to have really great, you can't go out a really long period of time with something like that, maybe a note through a bank, maybe, but generally, they have limits. You might be able to go out 20 years with a 500,000, but not the 30-year, you know, so there are some limits with these things. And so in any case, if all those warrant articles were to pass along with the the budget, we'd be looking at a tax rate of $6.18. So compare that to $5.99 from this past year. So pretty much in the ballpark. So pretty much in the ballpark. So unless there's any other questions for me.
Every year we have. We've never overspent our budget. In my experience, maybe sometime in the past we have, but not in the last ten years. Always had money left to. Where is the money left over in here this year? And why can't we cut out some?
Well, so it's a great point, and I can, I can point exactly where they are. They are in your personnel costs. If you go to the for some reason, I don't see where that my my notes, unfortunately, my notes for both the PD and the the PD and I guess it's highway as well, didn't come out for the and the open positions, but there are open positions for open positions in in the police department, there is the lieutenant sergeant and detective and a patrol. So those are the four open positions. That's a significant amount of salary and benefits. And then in public works, you have effectively, you have one. Is it in there? Yeah, thank you. Okay, so so in highway, you've got one open position. You have a director for full-time positions, three of which are and one open position.
Three of which are what?
So so yeah, so. Yeah, I find myself with that word. So but that's, that's really, I'd say that's where that is. And also, when you look at town hall maintenance and repairs, we have $50,000 in there for that. So depending upon how you prioritize, say, the town hall assessment report and the things that need to be done to this building, that might have an impact on it. Unfortunately, the budget law does not permit funding capital reserves from from excess budget during the year. It has to be done through a warrant article. But but for that matter, next year, if if there was a warrant article you wanted to say to be funded from unassigned fund balance or monies left over at the end of the year, if you will, you know, you know, maybe that's something that that we could look more at, that Mr. Wright had done a year prior. The the danger of that is if you make it only from those monies, then, and you don't have any money left over at some point in time, which could happen, then you'd be in a world of hurt if you needed that money in the capital reserve. I will say that the, in 2007, the town had a negative fund balance and had to have a warrant article to raise and appropriate money to have a positive fund balance that was required by DRA. So so here you are, you're looking at a a million dollar fund balance, which is a much better position. Still not to the point that that the Government Finance Officers Association would recommend, but it it does meet the minimum standard. It just, you have a range and we're at the the lower end of the range there, but at least we're, you know, we're we're in the range, right, right. So so, you know, it's, it is possible that, you know, in the wrong circumstances, things could, things could change dramatically. But but anyway, those, I would say those are the largest items. And then outside of that is just reconfiguring your sanitation in total, you know, truck it down. That saves a lot of money.
$117,000.
So other than that, it's seven o'clock and I believe my time is up.
I don't know, I don't know why it jumps out at me just as a concern, but the highway equipment debt, zero. I just, I worry, I worry that if we don't have at least a small amount of $10,000 or something.
So we have, we have a balance of 40, a little over 40. And I really pushed him on that because I felt the same thing. I thought, two things. One, it might be a bad precedent to have nothing going into it and that you see it every year. Oh, yeah, I know what that's for, so maybe we should have something in it. And but he really said, we don't have a need. So so this is, you know, this is kind of, if you go back to like a zero-based budgeting concept, you don't need, you don't put. So that's, that's where we were. These are, these are recommendations from, you know.
Put a dollar there because if he does need, if something breaks down and he does need, you're not going to be.
Well, this is in the, for the capital reserve fund. So so that would be whether or not we have a warrant article for funding the highway equipment, highway equipment.
See, I don't want to raise any money we don't have.
So he's looking at 2024, won't be any needs in 2024.
That can't be handled through through this.
The money that goes into there.
That's correct.
Contribute to it. So what, 40,000 2023? But in 2024, awesome, we're going to need 130,000 to replace the Peterbilt. I
Yeah, not according to him. So I mean, the, you know, the, maybe, maybe the thing to do is to put 10 in, you know, put something.
And that's, that's what I mean, and I was just thinking in terms of if something comes up with the inflation areas, you know, I mean, with, because it's, you know, the equipment's going to be more expensive. So that, just in my thinking of having something there. You know, which, as we know, the the tax bases used to have something being contributed on a yearly basis.
So his, his view too is that that through the ARPA funds just expended for his boom and flail mower for the trackless that, and and the trackless itself from prior, that that he's in really good shape. He plans to use the multi-one for the transfer station and the baler and the fork, you know, the forks for that thing. And and so, you know, I'm just basing it off of what we discussed. But we could, you know, maybe it makes sense to have something there. It could cause citizens concerned that there isn't money being put in, similar to the reaction that the board has. So maybe, maybe there should be something just to.
Especially we have, don't we still have the Peterbilt?
Oh, we do, yeah.
So in, as I was saying, like 2023, we don't need. But 2024 and 2025, we might be needing some money and that would give us a big hit. Because as you know, F250 is what, $60,000 now? So we don't have enough to even buy a pickup truck in there, so.
And mine was not, mine was not doubting what our department.
Right, no, I understand.
You have a good gene.
I, I think that what the board should start thinking about, I mean, Tim and I have talked about this for years, it's really a capital improvements program. Because to John's point, as you start planning out, you know, how long does this piece of equipment get to last? If you're putting a little bit away every year, then when it comes to that, you're in bathroom, you say, don't. I don't, I don't think we're really doing that kind of a long range plan.
Oh, we do. He, he does have that for his vehicles. Yeah, he does. And, you know, what's different in some municipalities is you, you sometimes will raise a certain amount of money and then and, you know, that it's under one warrant article too. I have seen, you know, where they, you know, they'll have everything within one. You know, maybe that's higher risk, you know, for these, but but in any case.
Does he put the senior bus under, under 10 years plan?
No, I don't believe so. Not that I had seen, no.
I'm just thinking of having to replace that in 10 years.
So in any event, so that's where we stand right now. I thank you for all the the motions and getting things done. I got a lot of work to do to get that tan in place. We're going to get that, so. We'll get going. Okay, thanks. I'll be back in a minute.
So the time being 7:05 PM, I made a motion to enter into non-public session. Per RSA 91A32A, the dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her, unless the employee affected one has a right to a public meeting and two, request a committee to be opened, in which case the request shall be granted. Also RSA 91A32B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. And RSA 91A32C, matters which discussed in public would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of this board, unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall be extended to include any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of fee, fine or other leaving if based on inability to pay or poverty of the account. And 91A32L, consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel either in writing or orally to one or more members of the public body, even where legal counsel is not present.
Second.
Motion second, full call vote.
Constantino, yes.
Testament, yes.
Ruggles, yes.
Hira, yes.
Scan one, yes.
We are.
Not yet.
Can you pass?
We're still on, right?
We're still on, right?
Yeah.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thanks.
Make a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public session of November 3, 2022. This disclosure would adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the board.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Oh, is a bigger motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Selectmen's reports. Selectmen's chairman, you are up first.
Now, let's see, keep this. So I assisted Paul. I didn't realize he's he's getting up there and he's still doing pretty good, but he's not great at climbing. And so I, I went down there and got some coffee, gave him a hand loading some branches and that. And he pruned the crabapple trees like on the Sunday morning crabapple trees by Tilton House. And he filled up the whole stake bed truck. They look a lot better. They're back under control. They're not reaching up into the wires or anything.
Can we make sure that we reference the parking lot so that people don't assume that we're pruning trees on private property?
On Main Street, the parking lot by he loves pizza, the town trees. So after that went over, we have some sumac that was taken over by Salmon Run. So I cut most of that out, got that taken care of. I brought up earlier, the light at the intersection with three, Kevin, we'll take a look at that. And you'll, only other thing is before winter, if we can take care of the cover on the HVAC lines that blew off last year and the telephone pole, it's about 25% worn, worn down and attached to the the building. And Primex suggests that we have an agreement or listen as additional insured. So I don't know if, how we want to approach getting that done. Those two things. The guide wires that attach to the building and that the the pole is getting pretty well worn down and it's leaning away from the building on the side that's about 25% missing.
Yeah, we just couldn't hear you.
So do we want to talk to the I don't know who wants to Paul. Know how you find that out.
It's the top one that was listed on it.
And the last thing was, is the information came in on another bid. I don't know, somebody was going to call another roof or two. I called two more. I called down to Queen City and another one in Milford, had a Milford number, but they've done stuff up here advertising. But I did get another one that came in, I think, today or yesterday. There it is.
Way into that.
Thanks, Gil. We got these two now, Google Pro. And there's one more somewhere. Let's keep it to it. And Jazzmore. Seems like they're right around the same price. One says 50 years contract.
Is Jazzmore the first one that you had?
Yeah, they're using the two options. I think the other one seems like it's the same thing.
And the other thing, warranty?
Yeah, it seems like it. I think one thing that I noticed is one says, they give you a free sheet of plywood if you need it, the other one's 100.
I didn't see on Shingle Pro, I did not see the warranty.
I've had the one.
Just says qualify for the systems.
And the other one says 50 year.
What was your third one, John?
I, it didn't come in.
Oh, what was, didn't you have one last week? Was that Jazzmore?
Yeah, there was.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah. They both have edging.
GA assistance plus warranty and. Before your labor warranty. Oh, it's court.
I'll go with Jazzmore because he's got it all written out in the 50 year warranty.
So the class.
15, 850 versus 17, so difference of $1,150, if my math is correct.
Which one?
Single, single Pro is 17. And then Jazzmore is 15, 850, which I believe is $1,150 difference. In favor of.
Yep.
I haven't got my. I'm not, I will.
You want to go with that? We ready to move on it, or do we still have some time?
Well, it's one from, they said that they had a couple of years ago.
They were.
Sounds like sixteen something.
That was around seventeen or eighteen thousand bucks. It was like eighteen thousand, something like that.
So it sounds like they're all in the same.
Yes, in the same range. It was from Caribon moving. Into. Seventeen seven seventy one. John?
What?
Seventeen seven seventy one.
Was she, was from that previous one?
Yeah.
Now it's last year, two years ago.
Twenty twenty one, seven five.
Sounds like they're all right around the same.
Does our purchase policy give preference to using Tilton businesses?
We try to when we, when we can.
Well, is the Shingle Pro is?
We don't have a policy or anything. We just try to. We can. Just worried they don't have a warranty listed. That's what worries me. Want to find out, John, and we'll deal with it like everything else in seventeen. Otherwise, we just go, but it's more specific.
I think they both have the same warranty. Because it's his own coin. I say Shingle Pro. Qualified systems plus warranty, I think it's in here.
No, didn't say. The only warranty is for labor for four years.
Which one?
On Shingle Pro. The other one says fifty years.
Right. Owen's going in complete new system.
Yeah, fifty year platinum warranty.
Right. It doesn't say anything.
Highlight.
It says includes.
It just goes.
A price includes the warranty.
I say, let's find out what the warranty is on the other one, so we can prepare.
That could be mess things up, Jean, for time wise. Financially, it doesn't mess things up if we go another two weeks on it. Did you see? I know I emailed them.
The difference would be if they can't do it this year, then we have to income, get a signed contract.
I don't know if you've been down there looking. I think we should get done right away before we get ice tams and and that for the year. It can step down the road. These guys.
The one that spelled it out the most then. They're both really, they're only a thousand dollars apart from each other, but I'm really worried about the the warranty. The other one says gap plus warranty and shingles, four year label warranty. That's all it's saying.
So anybody want to make a motion, or you want table it, or what?
Make a motion. We go with Jasmine Properties.
Jasmar.
Property L O C or.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Second, motion and the second discussion. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
So how do we do that? Somebody come, Tom.
No, does that, no, on the right.
Stop me, Constantino.
I have a letter from Mr. Guber that sent it to all of us. Would you want to read that?
So.
On the noise ordinance, or you want to just? How do you want to do with that? Some preserve hotel.
I remember it.
Effectively, he really was, let me just read it.
It's there, an address on it?
Yes.
Belmont. And that did get brought up.
Eighteen Lakeside Drive in Belmont.
That did get up, brought up at the hearing and addressed.
It did?
They voiced it a couple of times.
I don't know if he was, was he there at the last meeting? I don't know if he was. I don't know if it was. I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, so I think Constantino, I think the question becomes is that we have a noise ordinance. Noise ordinance covers noise, which, and, and to, to deviate from that for one specific situation would be.
Yeah, yeah, you and I have talked about this.
Yeah.
Would be a deviation of our noise ordinance policy. So I think, to me, one voice, I, I would, I think we just stick with our noise ordinance.
I recommend that, what, so first of all, when it's, when somebody writes into the board of selectmen, we ought to read it out loud and make it a matter of minutes. And then I, I do, I understand what he's saying and is his concerns. I think that we put it on hold and, and take the issues come up. Take it then, we have an order, like you said, we have an ordinance, and then we can't change an ordinance for one person, but we can take under advisement any complaints that come from a venue or different issues that come up regarding the noise ordinance from people, neighbors or whatever.
Yeah, I, you know.
It's not, I would change it for that reason, but.
And we're long ways out.
Right, so.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of achieving an ordinance or something that hasn't happened.
Right, I'm not either, but normally what it's been our practice is to read into the record is letter, but if, for the sake of time, if you don't want to do that, I'm okay with that as well. Because he's done it to the planning board already, so it's. It's up to you folks.
As a topic at the hearing.
We can read it or whatever. What do you want?
Would know, John.
It's a long, I, I read, I think it was what, two paragraphs?
Oh, it's five or six.
Yeah.
Can we attach it to the minutes or something?
Do you want to just attach, attach it to the minutes? I'm fine with that too. Okay, I'll forward it to you.
Okay, first of all, it'll be on the website.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll attach it to the minute.
All right, Gil, we'll forward this to you. Tilton School today, twenty plus years seniors helping seniors. There was twelve different groups, an average of seven students in each group. Some went out with their teachers to rake or clean up different seniors yards in Northfield and Tilton. Thank you, and also thank you to the DPW Director in Northfield and Kevin here in Tilton for going around tomorrow and picking up the leaves and the bags and taking care of that. That's great. We have been gifted at least six tickets to the gift of lights for our bus for the seniors this year, which we're very grateful for. We are in desperate need of bus drivers. We have three bus drivers. One is a has a medical issue and is not driving the next few weeks. And one driver is out of the country some of the time. And when he's available, he drives in them, which only leaves our one bus driver in our increase of requests are, our requests are increasing monthly. And it's hard to say no to them. And so Jane has been.
Got my name in there.
Okay, so Jane's been picking, picking some of the requests up and driving them on her own. So that's, if you would like to become a bus driver, see me or give Town Holocaust and they'll get in touch with me. Trick or Treat was a huge success. upwards of about eight hundred, maybe even a thousand of people showing up. Everybody had a great time. Executive Committee is meeting on November fourteenth at four thirty. I read you, Mr. Hoover's letter. I've had two phone calls trying to address, and I don't have the answer. I have no idea where to go with this answer. I've never experienced the people that having complaints for there's a religious group in Best Pocket last month or so on several days during the week. They stand out there. I've, I've seen them, but I've never encountered an interaction with them. And early on, when they've been out there, they've just been standing there with pamphlets and whatever. But the folks that have called me, they're now interacting with people and they don't want to be interacted with. They're actually going out into the sidewalk and interrupting their walk or whatever. And so I don't know how to deal with that. I don't know if there's something that can be said or done. I don't even know if that's a form of soliciting. And we wouldn't be allowing soliciting in a public car.
You're touching on some Bill of Rights.
That's First Amendment.
First Amendment, freedom of religion.
Public area, the people can walk away from them. They don't, they don't grab them, touch them or anything and cream, just like anybody would say hello to somebody or.
They're stopping on the sidewalk. They're not in the park, they're stopping them in the sidewalk now.
Well, I don't, I'd have to see if that's.
Yeah.
Stopping is stopping like grabbing them or saying, excuse me?
Stopping in front of them and talking to them, talking to them about their product.
They can walk, right? I understand how disruptive it is.
Yeah.
I've had it happen to me in cities and so on, but it's just something that it's a, it's a First Amendment right. So it's the same right that they have to walk away and say, I don't want anything to do with that. So that's, it's.
Or Girl Scouts can say, you want to buy cookies?
Yeah, we would, we would be treading on very, very thin ice if we tried to do anything about it. So unless it becomes something where there's, that's Johnson physical, then it's a whole different story. So, you know, that's the same way, it's the same way with Jehovah's Witnesses when they come to your door.
Or even, like I said, Girl Scouts in public areas, they're selling cookies and they say, walk up to you with a box of cookies and say, you want to buy some cookies?
They would need, they would need a peddlers, would they? So they're gonna.
Yeah, I'm not sure how, but you know.
They go do, yeah, I know, I know. Yeah.
All right. That's it for me.
Political signs.
So for my report, update on Budget Committee, last night, we, we heard from Lake Region Mental Health. We heard from the Pines. We heard from Casa. We heard from Hall Library. We had heard from Old Home Radio Four. We are, we, we took all four of those under advisement. We asked for a little bit more information on a couple of things from a couple of the agencies. And obviously, in the coming weeks, we will, we will hear from the Department Recommended Budgets, Franklin B and A, Yap, Granite State Children's Alliance. We've also reached out and contacted, I, I contacted through Selectman, Justman, Lockmere Water District. So they, they, they have a meeting on the fifteenth and they're going to get their, their budget ready for us as well. So moving along, some things to take into consideration. There was some good conversation last night about a couple of things. And, you know, there's, there's a couple of balance sheets that we wanted to see a little bit more on so that we can make decisions. It was, it was, so they, as you can see in the requests from outside agencies that Mr. Pearson gave us, there's a couple of them. There was one that was a significant bump up, and we have to take that under consideration in terms of from, from Lake Region Mental Health, to be candid, is just we have to take that under consideration in terms of the amount of services that they are giving to Tilton, which is for small municipalities, pretty significant. And as you can imagine, in terms of their case, the, the, the situation surrounding mental health that has come out of the pandemic has, it's sort of shined a light on some of those issues. And so they've seen their services and the need for services rise exponentially.
So they're asking for more?
Yeah, there's, there's, it's a significant ask for more, so. You can, the number, it's, it's in there already. It's already on the, on the budget sheet. So two more things, one for the, for the consideration of the board. We had had contact that I had forwarded to you from the Addiction Treatment Division and a question of the Division on Addictions. They were asking if they might, if they, if they could have a mention of their division, the Division on Addictions on our town website. And that was from Laura Williams. I said, I believe I forwarded it through, I think I forwarded it through yesterday because it came through. And I know that Selectman Constantino also got a request to come through for the, the page for the senior center as well. Thoughts from the board on giving, giving a mention on the Division of Addictions on our town webpage?
Well, you know, I, I, oh, excuse me. I think it's great and I think it's what they do, but where do we draw the line on what type of, you know, advertising? I did click on their thing and there's a lot of paid advertising on their site too. So I don't have to get paid for clicks or whatever. So, you know, do we, where do you start and where do you stop with the putting a listing of things? Is that something we should put on like the Facebook page type and keep? Or is that? It's a toss up for me. You know, I, I just don't know where we would stop and how much time and effort goes into this for Tim to keep putting people on? And then who do you say that you shouldn't?
How about, what about, let me propose this, because Selectman Justman's not here. And I'm not saying to do this on the seventeenth, but what if we take a look at it? We, we can all sort of maybe poke and take a look at their website and see what's there and think about how, if we were to give them, you know, give them mention on our, on our website, how that might be beneficial to our constituents. So just.
I did take a look at their website and then I, so I did call. We don't have, the senior center doesn't have a website anymore, but we do, Community Action has a newsletter. So I did ask Cindy Clarenbach, our program director, would it be something that she would consider putting on, putting as a link on the new, as a newsletter? So she briefly looked over and looked at the website and she would consider doing that as a link on the newsletter, because seniors are affected by this heavily. So that would be something that she would consider putting on. So just as a little tidbit there, but I, I'm with John. It's a toss up. When you go into a municipality, we've been asked people to do links in, on a webpage. When you go into a municipality, we've been asked people to do links in on a web page and you're setting a precedent. And where do you stop? I mean, it's, it is a a great cause and it's near and dear to my heart, but it's where do you, where do you stop that? It's a toss up with me.
Let me do, let me do a little bit. Let me get back to Ms. Williams and find out how many other pages that they have been welcomed on in other towns.
And I don't know if the state, because that's in Massachusetts. If the state has an official link to Department of Health and Human Services or something that has the same type of stuff, that might be more broad to everybody in their area as opposed to some that might be being advertised.
Sure. Okay, got it. Okay. Let me do a little bit of that. Let me reach back down to. The last piece comes from the Tilton Community and Economic Development Committee. We are the Tilton Economic and Tilton Community Economic Development Committee is hosting its first Downtown Business Roundtable. That will take place on November seventeenth from seven thirty to eight thirty in the morning here in Town Hall in the upstairs conference room. Complimentary coffee and donuts. We're going to just begin the roundtable discussion for obviously the businesses and everyone else involved in downtown. And we'd love to have those who want to share their ideas, come up and visit and be here again at seven, it's seven thirty to eight thirty on Thursday, November seventeenth upstairs at Town Hall. And that's it for me.
You're going around with flyers or something.
Yes, they're going to downtown businesses and giving them to the downtown, the folks downtown. So. And Mr. Pirate?
Had a great time at the Halloween event on the trunk or treat on Saturday night. A lot of fun. Don't forget, mark your calendars, Saturday, December third at four PM is the Tilton Christmas Parade, followed by fireworks at six PM. Fireworks will be shot off from Serret Park and viewable from Riverfront Park here in Tilton. Also, on Saturday, November twelfth at nine AM, there is a special district meeting for the Tilton Northfield Fire District at One of Scone Regional High School. And then as regard a special warrant article regarding high pressurized hydrants for the fire district. That's it.
Yep. So, but we do have someone online during the new business. Let me go make sure that the microphone.
Are you doing her report?
Our town administration.
We're a little behind, sir.
Town administrators, sorry.
So for action items, member group transmit over health trust for no one needs to sign. It looks like you all signed that. The open enrollment began will begin on November fourth and end on December second. Health Trust flexible spending account, the IRS has agreed to increase the contribution amount from twenty eight fifty, two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to three thousand and fifty, beginning oh, I don't have twenty twenty three there, twenty twenty three. It's not an automatic increase and it must be requested by the member group. So nothing changes on our end. It's just whether or not the board wants to allow employees to increase the contribution amount. So I approval from the board. This is what you want to do. You say yes, then I'll give an adoption agreement will be created and sent for the board to sign. So I need to know if you want to do it or not.
Oh, so we must request the
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I was thinking the employee has
No, the board has to approve the increase, to say, yes, you wanted to increase. Then I will go back to Health Trust and ask them for an updated adoption agreement, which will come back to you free to sign.
I'm a yes.
Yeah.
I have to accuse myself because I benefit.
So next item. Kevin and John scamming investigated the ceiling above Gail's office. Confirm the work needs to be done to ensure the ceiling materials don't fall through the suspended ceiling. Kevin says his crew could do the work on the weekend and take about sixteen hours with the four of them working on it. And the price Tim calculated that would be thirty one hundred, three thousand one hundred and twenty two dollars and twenty six cents. So the question to the board is, do you want to have Kevin and his crew do it? Or do you want me to go out and get bids for the work?
They doing it this weekend?
They're not doing anything until this board approves it. So I haven't told them to do anything.
Eric.
I have a question of what is in the material? So is there asbestos or other cancer causing agents? And are they going to be wearing any type of respirators or Tyvek suits to protect them? And then what about afterwards? How is the air not going to be disturbed by the dust and all that? Are we going to have someone come in and clean the office? And I'm just looking to protect our employees from bad things that might be up in that ceiling.
That'd be a question for John.
Well, I guess it's a mitigation thing. The plaster is eighteen. Let's say eighteen turn of the century. Sixty three. And the ceiling is metal with painted on it. I know we did a test down below, but and there was no lead down below by up there. It's what would OSHA say, I guess? You know, about health and safety, if, you know, I think maybe Eric's right.
Tens of thousands of dollars for a basement, but
Well, I mean, if somebody ends up real sick or gets stuck in their lungs and yeah.
The issue would be how soon can we get somebody up there? Because this issue has to be taken care of now that we know.
We need to add it while we should.
Or move or temporarily move the person out of that office.
Gina, does your office have that suspended ceiling?
Yeah, it's the same thing. You saw the pictures, I said.
Yeah, but I didn't know where it was taken.
Yes.
Everything says Gail's office.
Yes, and then there's some wiring up there.
It's the whole building then?
No, that's the only place that came down. I think they attached guy wires to the ceiling that didn't and Kevin said that, you know, we call it some board pulled down a ledger board or something. Collapsed.
Well, that's my only concern.
Yeah, the dust.
Yeah. Oh, so we would need verification.
But did Kevin think that he could do it safely?
I don't think he'd say couldn't. If he volunteered, the only thing is, is our what type of hazard mitigation would be done? And can we assure that nobody's going to go and inhale stuff and then come back to us five years from now and say it was caused by
Well, why would he give us, why would he tell us he could do it if he didn't think that he could do it safely?
I'm just saying it's our kind of our responsibility to make sure the town, protect the town from safety. What would OSHA say? That's the way to. I don't know.
Send the material out, get it tested.
We saw them, don't they?
No, I know. So that's, but then asbestos up there.
Right. What do you think is up there?
Asbestos.
Asbestos.
Well, Eric's question was asbestos. But I think, I think you look, let paint test is not talked about. Describe a scrape test.
You're the whole people get the lead test.
You're right. But the asbestos piece is the one that I think you need to look and just see.
The whole thing is, you know, is there like a hazard mitigation plan that he has for doing that? Which includes fresh air breathing, removing the dust and, you know, protecting the guys from from it.
We're being asked a question that we have a lot of answers to and that we don't have. I mean, a lot of questions to, and we don't have a lot of answers. So how can, and it's an unsafe condition. So how can we make a sound decision on this when we know it's unsafe? We've known it's been unsafe.
Oh, I think if we just hire, talk to hiring somebody to come in and say, hey, we need the ceiling falling down up above the thing. You guys qualified for doing that. And insured and all that.
So we want to do, so we want outside.
See what it looks like, you know, and see what they say.
Go outside this.
Test it to find out if it's bad.
Well, there's demo companies. I think fire.
Now you get thousands of thousands.
Safety.
Well, I know.
No, the fire cleanup company, they do that stuff. Yeah.
What's the other one? Surfos, the green truck.
Service Master.
Yeah.
And then there's all, all right. I don't think Albright does.
Something clean stuff too.
Yeah. Okay. So are we saying, yes, we would like to have
Some big tickle.
You have quotes. Because they take, because here's my take is that if someone comes in to take a look, and we get them in as quickly as we can, they're going to be able to, they've probably been through it enough, they're going to be able to identify and say.
Yeah, we can or we can't do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Then now Genie's going to come back in November seventeenth and then we're going to have another discussion on that. And then get quotes on that and then just for the cleanup and then to fix the problem, it's going to be another couple of weeks after that. Is it is unsafe as I am being told that it's unsafe? And what are we going to do with the meat?
Put this way, hasn't fallen down yet, but can't say no, it's not going to, but it hasn't. I, you know, something that should be addressed, I would say this here.
But the liability that we know is there. Same as the bridge. We closed the bridge because there's a known liability.
So do we have, here's, I guess here's another way. Do we, do we ask Kevin? Does Kevin have someone that can take a look or can he go in and take a look and say?
And just?
Yeah. Yes, there's hazards, there's material, although there isn't. We know we can do, I mean.
I know we can do the job.
Any, well, any of us could do the scrape test, but let me, any of us could. So the question is, can he?
Does he have the stuff for the guys, the type of protection? We can assure, you know, the Tyvek suit. And ninety five masks or goggles or whatever, or ventilator that sucks the air out while you're doing it.
So I think expressing to Kevin that we just, we want the word and make sure that it is
If it's another materials to protect everybody.
One hundred percent safe to protect them for doing it. So.
Safety.
So what are we going to do?
Ask Kevin to take a look and evaluate. It is, other than the structural piece, is there
A risk of?
Is there a risk with with
And if there's not, he can go ahead and do the work. Got it?
And you think Kevin is going to answer that question about letting in asbestos?
Yeah, maybe. Yeah.
They need to find, bring it in.
Surfro or just have them
It would be I think it's Clean Harbors. That's another one. I know they do. What's called Clean Harbors?
The Lawson Group. Oh, I didn't know that.
The Lawson Group. Okay, so I guess that would, that would cover us in terms of taking a look at it.
I know there's some
Hazardous material.
Genie can find somebody. All right. I guess we can find somebody to see if there's a problem up there, Genie. I think that's
Anybody else can.
Yes, I'm on board with that.
JP Pest Services provided an estimate at addressed the bats in the attic Senior Center at a cost of twenty seven ninety five. Sent you a copy of that. Do you want to more bids or do you want to include this one?
I'm, I'm fine with going with JP Pest.
Did it originally? Did JP?
Terminex. Two thousand and nine, there was flying squirrels and a few bats, but they took care of the flying squirrels and put in one way doors and so on and so forth. But I don't know whether or not when we did the, when the town did the roofing, whether or not some of it was disturbed or not, I don't know. But they did an assessment according to this, they did an assessment and said that the areas amount that the areas will be permanently sealed and one way doors will be installed as needed to allow exit without the entry.
Is that Terminex? We call Terminex, tell them your stuff isn't working anymore. How much does it come back and see what you want?
We left them for this guy a few years back. Town did for all the municipal buildings. I have no investment in it whatsoever. So I just, it was a severe problem when we, when the building was empty for so many years. It was five or six years that it was not being used. And then the kitchen, there was a six foot nest when Tom down the ceiling.
I don't know the price of doing it or what we paid originally.
It was a monthly service and they went in and did it.
So is it worthwhile to get Terminex?
We pay them right now a monthly service for pest control, but we do not pay them exclusively for bat control up in the attic.
Who, Terminex or JP?
JP Pest. JP does mice and something else.
Pest control.
Pest control.
I would, I would, I would say yes to JP because they're already there. They're familiar with the building. Go for it.
You know, I found skeletons and traps up in the attic.
Find down the maintenance room.
Where?
At the Senior Center in the trap door there.
Unemptied traps.
I'll make a motion that we approve the JP Pest Control for two thousand seven hundred and ninety five dollars to take care of the bat problem at the Tilton Senior Center, eleven Green Road.
Second motion and second discussion. Hearing none, all those who favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Next item, Lake Region Planning Commission members currently, Leanne is a member and so am I. The meeting times and locations are challenged for Leanne. Meetings are always in the evenings and always in the Lake Region. So I wanted to bring that to the board to consider naming someone else to serve on that committee besides Leanne.
How about, well, I think it should be appropriate to either somebody from CBA or if the planning chairman, I don't know if Jane would do it. For some coffee. Or I guess CBA isn't probably it. I'll nominate Jane Hall. She's not here, so we can.
She said she'd do it. I said, if I nominated you, would you do it? And she said, yes.
I'm a yes from Jane Hallman.
That's more appropriate because she's been on the planning. That's more appropriate because she's been on the planning for a long years.
Jane, Eric.
Sure. Yes. Jane Hallman.
Okay, Land use department's running out of filing space upstairs, we need to get at least seven more filing cabinets. Well, challenge is gonna be is we're running out of space to place filing cabinets and. Really need to make a decision about where we're gonna put these, they need to be close so they can access the files.
Yes.
So. We must have some files that don't get accessed all the time out of. All those, maybe, you know, like five year old files or something like that. Every single one of those. Well, my suggestion is that the police take the stuff out of the basement and that they provide room for. Some of this stuff, I, I can't believe it's all, or some stuff on the stage that doesn't need access.
Put it up on the stage, take the stuff on the stage and put it downstairs.
Or whatever's not used, the other thing is. Is archival. File cabinets are the most space wasting way to keep files, I think, and. I noticed that the, the room where you guys cleaned out at the Tilton School. And they went into some shelving with archival boxes and they put dates and times on them and they're still accessible in there. A filing cabinet, as you know, you can't fill it all the way to the back and then there's airspace above, so you only get four. And those boxes are. Great for archiving and if we could archive some of the stuff that's down the basement or something into those. It's a nuisance file cabinets because it's.
Stuff's headed to the PD. All the stuff that can go to the TV is headed to.
Help me nice and box, maybe their files.
There are, do they want files like this right here, Genie, or lateral files? Files like those.
Shuffle some stuff from the stage downstairs and.
If you put them here, they're gonna, they have to get down a stool.
Yeah, I know, I just realized.
Yeah.
Forgot that three feet above.
Well, well, the other thing becomes is when we get the shift to the table going over there, that opens up this space here, the floor space.
But if, if you're gonna do the video. It would block it.
It, it won't block it, but there's a weight issue, so.
So it would need to go up behind.
Yeah, take those file, I don't know what are in those. Downstairs. And put the files up there.
Okay.
There's at least three of the lateral files up there that were selectmen's files. File cabinets, but they're lateral, I was gonna suggest it, I mean, did you know that you had a?
I can go in there, I have stuff in there, I.
I have a couple of files up there, a couple of drawers in one of them, but I mean, we could easily. Go through them and then reuse that lateral file, but they don't need laterals, but they could go downstairs.
I think if.
A couple of them, but the health officer uses the other two.
The PD is important to get those, now that they have the files, finally get those moved over, because that was supposed to happen. I think the week after they did the move.
But I think if you talk to Catherine, you could rearrange and put the files on the other side of this wall here.
So, yeah, so let's.
Some of them, hers.
Well, for the efficiency of this department, let's. Let's, let's keep the land use files upstairs and then we shuffle the other files. Yeah, wherever, wherever we feel is appropriate, Catherine may have a couple of cabinets that could go downstairs too. I mean, not be access, so. Upstairs.
Next item on the agenda is the Tilton Island Bridge, based on the public hearing. On the twentieth, they really want to find out how the board wants to see because. And Tim mentioned it in the, in his budget presentation that. While there's a five hundred thousand dollar grant potential, it has to be matched. Until the money is raised, we go through other grants and donations and. I didn't get what I heard in the public hearing was people were supportive, but. No tax dollars, no Tilton tax dollars. Used to help with the restoration of that bridge and. That. Grant application for the land and water conservation fund is. It's a big grant to do and. I don't, I have no issue doing it, but I don't, I. I'm concerned, I don't want to get ahead of it just to have people say, don't want to do it. So I guess I need the board's direction because, but I'm gonna write the grant, I gotta start soon and it's got, it's gonna be like a two or three day. Just nothing but the grant.
With the grant, okay, we, we put a warrant article for the five hundred thousand dollars. In the meantime, if we fundraise. Whatever, have a brownie sale, how many browns could I sell, I don't know. Can that money go towards replenishing or towards that? Warrant article.
So it, it, it's a, it's a, it's a timing and it's a process issue, so. He applied for the grant goes in in December, right?
Right.
You won't hear back until October twenty twenty three. If we were successful in getting the grant, so you'll hear about it then. So if you put a war. If you put a warrant, warrant article in this. Year, right, and it gets approved, let's say it gets approved in March. Then you have the money. But you don't have a guarantee of getting the grant in October. What I've been told is it's a great project, they, they believe it is, it is, you know, will be successful. Right, so. So that, let's say, let's say that is successful, five hundred thousand passes town meeting and then. In October, you get, you get the five hundred thousand approved, you don't get it right away, so that's why you need the five hundred thousand. Because you have, you, you're starting to spend money, but then there's also a little. There are a lot of things that have to happen, there's gotta be a survey that's gotta be done. There's gotta be a lot of work and it, it may be that, you know, based on. What I heard, it may be that we. You know, you heard some people say, well, we don't know what it's gonna cost, we don't have the details and that's absolutely true because. A lot of work has to go into it, we're not gonna know until you start, you know, I, I talked, I talked to two or three engineers, they've given the numbers, but. There's nothing hard, so.
We could start a Stib campaign, save the island bridge, we start selling sweatshirts and things like that and. I mean, I just came up with that.
But you're, you, you're absolutely right though, Genie, you don't, the alternative to that is not do anything with the island and they. They, I don't think there's anyone that wants nothing done with the island. So the alternative to that is go to town meeting with five hundred thousand dollar bond issue. That's, that's what I was thinking from that meeting, that's what I got from the meeting. It's a smidgen of people that showed up at the meeting and yes, they don't want you to do anything because we don't have real numbers, but. Hopefully by then we'll get closer to the numbers, but the alternative to that is absolutely do nothing and. It just goes to waste and it just deteriorates.
And it pushes the timeline out even more if we decide to do so.
And it's much, 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 much more money, people, I mean. People got married on that island, people, I mean, there's a lot of sentiment to that island and people. Want that island back, but it's gonna come at, at some type of cost to us.
So, I mean, in the meantime, we could go after corporate donors in town in, in, in a capital. Campaign, in the meantime, paralleling this, so that.
So the first thing that's gonna happen and that's, I guess, what I'm trying to get understanding from is. If you want to move forward with the land and water conservation grant. That's the first thing that needs to happen, I need to write that grant, it's due in the middle of December, so I've gotta start working on it. And. That goes in, so you go to town meeting and you say. And just so they just, again, it's significant, like, work and that's fine. So you, so I write the grant and we're not gonna know anything, but you're gonna go into town meeting and say, we've written this grant, not gonna know anything. But. We want a, we want bond, so the fundraising. I agree, but that's not, you know, that's not, it's a start right away, you can't really start right. We've still got to get numbers and.
So I, I'll say, I'll say, let's start the grant process, let's put the warrant, let's, let's go with the warrant article and. I'll, I'll just put it in very straightforward kind of group, let's shoot our shot on it and then.
I agree.
And let's shoot our shot and it's, I mean, it's the, it's the chance that we have to take in order to try and get this done. And then when things come, as Eric said, not to belabor this because we do have to get moving, it's just, I mean, we'll go out, I, I, I have no problem. You know, hitting the streets, knocking on doors.
We need to, all of us work together and get that momentum going.
And I'll be. I'll be, I'll be very straightforward and someone brought it up at the meeting, we have, we have two, basically two new car dealerships. One took over for a while, but and, and they're, they're ready and they're out there, we have another, you know, we have another. Business that's coming to town, that's. That, that is really looking to get involved, you know, with the preserve, that's gonna look to get involved in the town as well, so.
Senators and legislators that are all.
Okay, so yeah, Jenny, let's go. And if you have to sequester yourself for three days, just let us know and we won't text you.
Okay, and the last item on the action item is the Christmas raids, I assume you want to go ahead and get those this year. That's all I got, unless anyone has questions for me.
No, we do have a gentleman.
Yeah, we do have someone that is online.
Keeps popping on and off. There's something up on the speaker, the bubble. I can't, you gotta X out that screen, that screen on the right. If you're watching this, Rick can hear us. There he is, hey, hold on.
Hi, all thank you for taking the time and putting together this really nice platform, I have COVID and. It's a great way to socially distance from you guys, so thank you. The reason. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, we just need to know your name.
Oh, my name's Randy, I'm with Padlock Properties LLC, I own the. Property, it's a four family property on eleven Academy Street. And I just wanted to jump on and try to get a sense of where things stand, I. I've heard a lot of hearers say, I've seen some of the clips of the recorded selectmen's meeting. Just trying to get an understanding of what the timeframe is on the project for the erosion control in front of my building.
So we met, our DPW director was here today and in briefing us on a couple of other things, he, he discussed the Academy Street project. The Academy Street, you know, will be a primary focus for the DPW in twenty twenty three. So I, I don't believe with the, with the winter coming up that it's that in terms of getting and remediating the situation that's going on right now. That that's gonna be possible, but. As he stated to us, and you can go back and see the, the, the recording for tonight, that Academy Street becomes primary focus to get that. Situation squared away for twenty twenty three.
Okay, yeah, I, I just want to be prepared for, you know, what's to come, I've. Replaced my water mains, I've dealt with gas leaks outside of my building that have, may or may not have stemmed from the erosion. And I've been in contact with Gail and Jean, I think it's Genie, if I'm not mistaken. To try and do my part, try to be a good neighbor to not only the aqueduct company, but also to my tenants. As a landlord. My plan is to kind of patch a hole in my driveway where. I have water coming off my building and I think it's seeping into my driveway and then under the street. And I think that it's not helping matters, so my plan is to try to partner with the town, patch my driveway, try and get it sealed up. As best I can before snow flies. And just all that I ask is if you guys could please just keep me in the loop as to. You know, anything that I can do to help communicate to my tenants. If you have any suggestions or concerns as a property owner, where the issue is, I, I'd like to. Work with you, not against you and trying to help expedite it as much as I can.
We appreciate that and we will, we will keep you up to date as things progress.
Okay, I, I appreciate it, I, I've kind of been a little bit noisy because of the parking block situation. I know that they're there for safety and it's been explained to me and I get it, it's, it is a really tough situation. Because of the way the retaining wall is constructed. I, I have been noisy about the, the traffic going the wrong way, heavy trucks, school buses, the. Trash truck and trash pickup for my building and I don't want to be noisy. I just want to do what's right for my tenants. I've expressed my concerns in writing to Gail, Genie, and I'm gonna let you run with them and just trust that. It's in process. Did you need my?
No, it's, you know, that this evening, we've also, we also decided to put a weight on the, the road as well, just so you know.
Yeah, that's awesome, I just, the strategy for snow concern is my biggest. Concern on the table today because snow is coming, we all know it. I just don't want the snow to be piled up in front of the erosion problem. In, or decreasing the amount of time we have to start the project, because I know it's a springtime project. I get it, we don't want to do it right now because snow could come at any time and there's planning involved. And I, I've tried to explain to the water company, we gotta try and come up with a solution that works for everybody. That's my focus and goal, so I, I'd like to offer my name and phone number to the selectmen's board. As a point of contact, you know, I don't know if you have my email address, please don't hesitate to reach out to me if I can do anything to help too. I, I'm coming from a place of neutral ground is the tone here.
Excellent, and we appreciate that, and if you wanted, if you just, if, if you could just send that, the phone number and contact information to Gail. It'll get disseminated.
Yep, I've emailed her as early as today with my phone number, so I'm sure she has it. But I really appreciate you guys hearing my concerns and. I'm optimistic, I've put in a new water main in my house so that when the time comes, I'm ready. And I'll keep my tenants well informed of what's going on, but I need that information from you guys, that's all I'm asking for.
We understand. Yeah, very fair.
Very cool, well, I won't keep you guys, thank you so much for your time and I want to wish you good health.
Have a great evening.
Thank you, you too, thank you so much, bye for now.
Any other new business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, motion in a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Ten oh one. Sixteen minutes behind schedule.
We were so good, who jinxed us?